This time we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Siggenbauthel?
Present.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
Next item of the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Of course, this is a special call meeting. I cannot add anything to the agenda and I have nothing to recommend striking from the agenda, so I recommend the agenda be approved as presented. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Siggenbauthel?
Yes.
Next item is public comments. Anyone have a public comment that they'd like to present?
I want to thank Zach for walking those kids to town yesterday. They were so smart. That's the only one I got good jelly ready for them. They was really excited.
I think all the schools had a good day yesterday.
Anything else? Next item is the Comprehensive District Improvement Plan Committee.
So, this is something we approve annually. Appreciate Mrs. McFaul's work on this. This is the District Improvement Plan Committee. This committee will work on the C-DIP before, we'll start here in just a, the big meeting's here in about a month or so, isn't it, Mrs. McFaul? But it's kind of an all-year-long process. But we appreciate the folks that have agreed to serve on the committee. Holly Pierce, Russell County Middle School teacher. Kimberly Webb, Salem Elementary School principal. Joyce Shear is Russell County High School teacher and also a site-based council member. Other leaders, Danielle Halm, Russell County Middle School. She's our Youth Service Center Director there. Jennifer Blakie, Instructional Assistant, paraprofessional at Japetown Elementary School. Mrs. McFaul is Russell County Central Office Administrator. Mrs. Dameron is another Central Office Administrator. Ms. Joel Wilson is a board member. Classified staff, Ms. Samantha Neely, paraprofessional at Russell Springs Elementary School. Parent and also serving as instructional coach is Dr. Brooke Bartrug. Community representative is Christina Burton. She's the, works in the children's department mostly at the public library. And Ella Pierce is a high school student. So, most of those names, except for one, has served on the committee for more than one year. And we thought that it was, they all agreed to serve again, but they just have some familiarity with the process and then at some point we'll start rotating people off. So, I recommend that the committee be approved as presented.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Siggenbauthel?
Yes.
Next item is school year 2023-2024, end-of-year assessment results, review, school and district improvement planning.
So, thank you all for being here. This is, as we said, this is an informal meeting. It's always a great discussion for school board members. I know I can speak for them, but everyone always enjoys to hear the good stuff that's happening to your schools. Mr. Kazook and I were talking this morning, principals, of just how great it is to have instructional coaches in the schools this year and the conversations that that's had. And I know each of you all appreciate those roles as well, and so, all of our coaches, and I know Ms. Vicky can be with us, but appreciate Ms. Bridget and Mr. Galby here as well as in addition to the instructional coaches here with each principal. So, again, it's informal. As I said in the email and prep for today, we want to talk about the good stuff that's going on, our current state with our end-of-year assessment results, and then just your improvement planning and things that you all have put in place. I know Mrs. McFaul and I have enjoyed with Ms. Shear coming around to each of your buildings and sitting down with the head principals and instructional coach to talk about end-of-year assessment results, but more importantly, what we're doing to improve and just the good stuff that's happening to your schools. And, you know, I'm really pleased with the good stuff that's happening to our schools. I think the Kagan structure training that we've been doing now for two summers, I think that highly qualified, or highly qualified, high-quality instructional resources, HQIR training that we had this summer has been great and has facilitated a lot of conversations. So, again, I'm just really proud of where we're at, but we've always got areas to improve upon, and you all know that. So, I appreciate Ms. Webb. She's volunteered to go first, and we'll just start with you all.
Before I get started on this, can I say something on a side note since I got the floor?
You've got the floor.
Because I don't, you can't stop me now, all right?
I cannot.
No, I'm just kidding. Actually, this is completely side note, but I've not had everybody together in one spot. So, I would just like to say, aside from stepping aside from my administrator role for a moment, just want to say thank you to the people in this room that, we got countless messages. You know, we went through some things with Jamison a few weeks ago, and the support for Russell County School District was also pretty important to us. And I don't mean to get emotional, it's just, it's been a rough couple of weeks, but we got a lot of texts just from other administrators from the school. The high school has been phenomenal in re-establishing JMo and a lot of things, and I so appreciate that. I reached out to Ms. Tarter, but several people within this, in this room, really were instrumental in just the prayers that went up. So, aside from test scores, test scores mean a lot, but when you're in that situation, they don't mean as much, and it puts things in perspective. And so, I don't usually get to see everybody. I'm out on the island, sometimes we call it out there, it's Salem pretty far out, but thank you all, those of that text and reach out and just for the prayers in general. It was much appreciated during a really, really rough time, so.
Thank you, Ms. Webb, and he's doing well.
He is doing well. He's doing well. We've made it every day this week, Ms. Tarter. We've made it all day to school, so it's been, it's been a little bit of a rocky road, but we're getting there, and he's doing well. But I really do appreciate.
Last week, Ms. Tarter, and Ms. Webb told me, she said, "I'm going to reach out to Ms. Tarter," because his first day back, teachers that he never had had just stopped and said, you know, "They're praying for you," hugging, and so, you know, I'm. That's right. Yeah, we're about teaching and learning.
Because these test scores matter, but I'll just tell you.
But we've got a caring school district.
As a mom who had a kid that, things were really uncertain for a while, that was the first thing out of his mouth was how everybody came up to him. So, whether Jamison ever scores distinguished or proficient, what matters to him is how he was loved in that school.
Thank you.
And so, before I started the test scores, because it is what it is, but I don't, I don't ever get the chance to say that, so thank you all.
We've not passed the plank here, have we?
So, we'll get back to business now, sorry. Just a little side note, wasn't really planning on that, you can ask Ms. Rebecca, but it's just, I really do truly, truly appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing that.
I really do. So, we'll kind of look at Salem's test scores, you know, as Mr. Ford says, you take what you get and we figure out how to move forward. And so, of course, as Salem came out this year, we ended up with an indicator of yellow, not something we, of course, was striving for, obviously, we were green, so we had some setbacks. We've kind of really fine-tuned where those setbacks probably occurred, and we've really tried to hone in on some things. And so, when we started our test analysis day, one of the things that I started with with my teachers is that test scores measure achievement and tell us where a student is, but not where they're going to end up. And we have to keep that in mind. Some of these kids, I think, have more potential than what they showed, but that doesn't mean they're not going to reach that, and we always got to keep that in mind. So, when we looked at our sub-scores, you can kind of see all the colors on the front, but if you really flip to the back, this is where Ms. Rebecca and I really sat. We've done some digging, we've done some talking, that we shared a pretty in-depth PowerPoint with our staff that day, because we want to get back to where that green is and kind of start moving. So, we begin to really pinpoint what are our targeted areas, what are the areas that we really feel like we've got to look at? And I think we've always known a little bit in the back of our mind that that apprentice group holds a huge accountability for us, and it will come full circle when I talk about HQIR, because I feel like that's where we're going to move some of those kids. But we had larger apprentice categories in our reading and math instruction this year, which also brought us down to that orange level, and then we had a significant decrease in our sub-population, especially at 17.5, and that subgroup ended in red. And so, we also had our third grade reading group only scored 37% proficient distinguished. Now, I'm just, I'm just giving you like, we had to really fine-tune, we had to really get a magnifying glass, like what, where are those drops? Where do we really got to put our, where do we got to put our focus? Because even though you dropped, not everything's bad, okay? I mean, I had to remind my teachers of that, like, we weren't, we were still doing some good things, but there were some areas we really needed to focus on.
I think the general public would be amazed at the student-level data that you all look at, not just overall grade scores or specific subject scores, but you all get down to the individual student data.
So, we print out an entire list of all of our students, and we categorize them, we color-code them, like where they were last year. We take their, Ms. Rebecca, we didn't bring all that, but she created their math scores of.
All of our schools do that.
Yeah. So, like their, yeah, Ms. Rebecca, we did, we took our end-of-year test scores and their math scores individually, which ones dropped from last year. Some of our kids that we saw really low on the KSA, their math scores this fall were already up. So, like, okay, what was, we were trying to figure out those correlations. So, we really tried to study in depth, what were some things that we can really target? And reading and math is going to be our focus. Now, that doesn't mean we're not worried about science and social studies, I'm not saying that, or writing, but this HQIR was really embedded in that area. So, those were two of our really targeted areas. Now, what are we going to do to kind of fix some of that things before we talk about our celebrations? And we'll kind of, we'll circle back around to that, but there was, there was still a lot of good, and, you know, you have to keep your teachers and your students in mind when you, when you do take a step back, like, how are we going to bring them back and knowing that everything's okay? So, there were some celebrations. You know, I take pride in that our climate and school safety results were still green, they did not drop, they went up a little bit. You know, that's the students and how they feel about the school, and how they feel within our school, and that's equally important, which kind of goes back to what I said at the very beginning, that's it, that's super important. Our writing has been something we've really focused on the past couple of years, and that is something that we have seen significant increase in, that we are really proud of with our, the number of students that is going up in with our combined writing. And then our science, now, we've really worked on our apprentice, but our science, like our novice, we only had, I think it was eight percent of our students scored a novice. So, that's like, that's a really big deal. So, there are, there's still a lot of good there, we just kind of got to feel back and say, where do we want to put our, where are we going to put our focus? So, looking at moving forward, like, how are those things going to happen? It's not in the moving forward, but when we looked at one of our targeted areas for special education, this year, we were able to have two extra staff brought into Salem Elementary. We, so we now have four special education teachers, which is going to make a tremendous difference. We only had two last year, and then we had a sub for the other one, but that's, 44 kids is a lot for those, for that number of teachers to really be able to wag in the service and really be able to do that well. So, with the four staff we have now, we have really been able to, we did an entire session of PD just on co-teaching and collaboration, because we have enough of them to get back in the classroom. So, we feel like that's going to make a huge difference there, now that the staffing has changed a little bit for that, and we're excited about that. Also, this summer, Mr. Ford mentioned the HQIR, and we really took hold to that. Ms. Rebecca and Ms. Faith and myself, we really wanted to, how can we bring that to light? How can we really, if we're being honest, we've had a new curriculum for a couple of years, but have we really dug into, if I had that high of apprentice, probably not. We've not hit with the rigor we need to.
Can I pause? You all know I'm going to have to do that.
Yeah.
Pause you just a minute, and let me go to Mrs. McFaul. Administrators, just jump in as you need to, but let's talk about what that training looked like, so the board really understands what that HQIR training that we talked about, because it has, again, facilitated so many discussions with our staff. And I see principals, I see you all shaking your head. So, Mr. McFaul, talk a little bit about what that looked like for our district.
Instructional materials are basically what we used to call textbooks back in the day, which, they're still textbooks, but it is not like what we had 10 years ago. High-quality instructional materials now are vetted, they are made sure that they are actually aligned to our Kentucky academic standards. They have resources within there where, you know, used to, we would have to go out and spend our time trying to research to find things for the students with disabilities, for the EL kids, and we all know that our population is continuing to grow and grow and grow. And then just, you know, there's Tier Two materials, you know, we call HQIR Tier One instruction, but there's just those Tier Two materials already embedded within that resource that just tells the kids it didn't go first time, because that was another thing that the teachers had to do. Like, "I taught this lesson, I taught it perfectly, why did the kids not get it?" Well, but you have to go back and you've got to find something else to teach it a little different, or just add a little something to help those students get it. But all those things take so much time to go out and find, to make sure that they're aligned to the standards. So, now, we have been so fortunate to have these materials, and then we had a lot of the COVID money, the Esther money, that helped schools to purchase those, because they're not cheap.
Oh, it was 1.26 million.
Well, that's it, that's all that's spent.
Over the course of the COVID money that the district spent on instructional resources, textbooks, which is bigger than just textbooks, but on that instructional resources with the COVID money, yep.
And then, you know, some folks, you know, they say, "Hey, I don't want to use this high-quality instructional material, because I'm a teacher. I don't want you to take my flavor away. I want to do it this way." And that's great, but if it's not connected to the standards, and then we get tested on the standards, then there's that disconnect there. So, what we have tried to do in this HQIR training is let people see that this is a gift you have been given. It's giving you back time, so that you can really invest and look at data and make sure that you're teaching the things that you're supposed to be doing, and there's no way, if you're looking at these high-quality instructional materials, and that's why it's been so instrumental, having our coaches actually there in the building, because it's so massive, and we all came together and we looked at these things, and we worked with the teams and the teachers, and we said, "What are the things that show you with the most?" And that's how we even chose the one high-quality instructional material that we ended up with. But, I mean, I can't express to you the massiveness of these things. So, again, with these instructional coaches in the building, talking to these teachers day in and day out, they're seeing, "Oh, you need more of this? Okay, let me go back and see." And they're finding these resources, and then we're going back and sharing, and they're saying, "Hey, let me come into your room and let me help you implement this." So, it's, I mean, it has been a win-win all the way around. And just like Ms. KJ said, you know, even though we had the training through the vendors that we got these high-quality instructional materials from, teachers always feel overwhelmed. There's always 25 extra things to do. So, again, having the principals on board, the assistant principals on board, our coaches in the building, to all work together to bring these things to life, and then to take them into the students, so that we have those better student outcomes, it's, it's been a great thing.
And the trainers from Kentucky Department of Education, the administrators participating this summer, I think we all agree, they did a really good job.
Yes.
They just made it real for us.
Yes, and just the statistics behind that, you know, and I think that's what some of our principals have talked about, too. It's one thing when you say it and you know it in your mind, and a lot of the teachers even know it, you know, that, "I should be using this," but when you see some of those statistics that they show in student outcomes, when you use a high-quality instructional material on a curriculum basis and when you don't, it's pretty mind-boggling. So, I think that really got some of the teachers on board as well, and there were some that were very resistant, they started trying just a few little things, and they were already seeing positive student outcomes, which made them only want more. So, it's exciting about things to do.
Good work. Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Well, just to kind of piggyback that, we spent some time this summer, and Ms. Rebecca and Ms. Faith and I, we opened our, before school started, we used one of our PD days to just focus on what does this HQIR look like? And I might miss the, it can become very overwhelming for teachers. So, we really wanted to break that down. The success that we've seen in the receptive and the willingness, I think we, it's probably been more than what we kind of originally thought. So, we kind of took it all the way back to the basics in the sense that.
Because you all had teachers come to you and say, "Thank you."
Yeah, they have.
Yeah.
Now, I'm going to say, like, when we first rolled this out, we said, "You can go ahead and throw every pacing guide you have away, we're starting back with just the HQIR." So, each nine weeks, we started back, they had to, we're building our pacing guide, where they put which standards, what, what resource, what HQI resource am I using, and how am I using that? And it, it was a little, kind of, again, overwhelming at first, but now they have taken it and just, they've really blossomed with it. And so, in that sense, what we asked for was, "Okay, I can ask you to do these things, but I've got to be accountable as administrator as well." And so, one of the things that we're doing is we developed based off what they told us this summer, and one of the things I really remember them saying is, "Try little things a little bit at a time." And I think that's where the key to not being overwhelmed, but we developed a walkthrough tool based off what they showed us, where we go in, we look at their pacing guide, and we can see the HQIR, and we give immediate feedback, and we're doing those every single week we're dividing, and every staff is have somebody in their room every single week, providing them feedback on the HQR, how the lesson looks, what's going on. I walked into one the other day, and she's like, "Now, listen, my pacing guide's a day off." And I was like, "It's okay." She was like, "We really needed some more practice with this," and I'm like, "That's okay." And we were just kind of laughing about it, she's like, "But I just feel like I've got some, a good plan to go by." And so, that's what we're seeing. Now, I mentioned her before, and I'll talk about her again, but I think people have to, on the outside looking in, you don't understand how hard some of that curriculum can be. So, Ms. Amber Humble, one of my fourth grade teachers, and she's on one of the leadership teams, I think, with Ms. Rebecca at the district, she's like, "I'll do it," but now, I'm not seeing success. And Sarah Brown across the house said, "You got to stick with it. Keep showing, keep showing." So, she does, the reading has a weekly progress check, and their averages at the beginning were like at 40%. She was like, "I don't, I don't know, I'm doing all the things, I'm doing all the things." I said, "Well, they didn't get that rigor in third grade, they missed a lot of standards." Obviously, at 37% proficient distinguished, now, they are already showing at 87% proficiency every week. But she had to stick with it, and she has seen that growth, and she spoke up, and like, Ms. Rebecca can attest to her, it's been a complete, it's been a shift within our school.
She was the one who said, "Use me as an example," didn't she?
Oh, listen, because she'll tell you, she said, "I looked at that group and I thought, 'Well, I might as well just leave if I've got to try to do all this.'" Like, "I can't, I can't do it, like, I can't." And she has truly like, I mean, Ms. Rebecca, we could tell stories after stories.
Yeah, I think, too, one thing that some might struggle with, and I think we've had this conversation, too, teachers, it's hard to see students struggle, and sometimes we've heard in the past, "Well, it's too hard, we can't do that." So, one thing this year, teachers are really realizing that we still have to give them the level of the standard that they need. And even if it was hard, just like Ms. Amber shared, you know, they, they didn't get the results at first, but then, continuing on to push through, they're seeing those results. And I want to say, too, one thing Ms. KJ has allowed is some release time for these teachers, just to not feel overwhelmed, to have time to really dig in and plan. I've spent multiple days with multiple different teachers, one-on-one, for a full day. We've had release time for half-days, actually, today even, we have science meeting this morning, we have reading, grade level, second through fifth meeting this afternoon, just to have that alignment across all the grades, what's working, what's not, what does your classroom look like, what does your daily, day-to-day schedule look like? We have a few new teachers in that content as well, so just having time to have those conversations, because I think that's the part of, it can be overwhelming, because all of this is thrown, and then not really having that time. So, we've been fortunate to have some release planning days in there, so we can provide that for teachers.
Where they bring in substitutes, just that we're clear on the terms.
Yeah, so I get a sub form that day, and we've, they've done some one-on-ones with Ms. Rebecca, and then they came to us asking after the test analysis day, like, "My third to-grade teacher," they've went in and watched each other, like, and I've always said, I think we have some of our own best resources in their own schools and our own districts. And so, they went in each other's classrooms, and so, they're wanting to get together and to be able to work through that, and we've really seen the success with that. Now, on the flip side of that, that means Ms. Rebecca is constantly, constantly either with a group, here with a class, or she's in a classroom, and we're working on HQR. She's taking structures to them, and they're, what the teachers are realizing is there's more there than what they realize it. So, she sent out some things the other day, kindergarten's like, "Hey, can I use this? Can I do this? I'm going to print this," and they're, they're running with it. So, I really feel like our foundation, we're going to see that, that change. One of our other really big pushes this year was, we are doing some centers, and they're called like RTI, but they're not just RTI, but they're centers, first grade through fifth grade, everybody has a 45-minute block, we have to work it in our master schedule, where kids are broken down, and there's no more than six kids, I would, I don't think, six or seven kids in a group. Now, that is when our RTI kids are being serviced with what they need for their interventions. However, all the other kids are also broken down into a group, they're getting supplemental interventions on reading, on math, on science. Now, that is massive in a scheduling, but it means all hands on deck. That means you've got everybody in that building, Ms. Rebecca, myself, Ms. Faith, anybody at any given time is running a center. So, they are getting intense 45 minutes in small groups of six kids, where we're really able to focus on those kids and give them what they need. And so, I think that's going to be something that we're going to be able to really see a big difference in as well. It's a lot of communication within that whole system of our RTI, RTA, and all of the admin, but that's been really good for us this year. So, that, that is something that we've really enjoyed as well. Of course, I'll speed it on up, I know everybody else has got things as well, but we're, we're working on tracking our map data. We have created a area, we have weekly admin meetings this summer, that we came about this summer after I went to Casa, and our admin team is Ms. Rebecca, myself, our counselors, Ms. Amy Roy, our family resource, instrumental in so many things, and myself and Ms. Faith included, and we meet every week. But we asked the teachers, we need to know, we broke it down, I need academic barriers, attendance barriers, social, emotional barriers, and we've created a wall of all of these things, and we sat there the other day, and we were already, things that teachers and people are doing that's targeting these kids, because we've got to realize that a lot of times there's barriers these kids are facing besides academics. And so, we have created a color-coded system of what are attendance issues, what are, what's going on socially, emotionally, that these kids need. And once we sat down and we looked at every, we met with every teacher, and we met with every staff, even RTI gave us lists, it was amazing that, and Ms. Amy's like, "Well, this kid, this kid, and this kid's already in my self-esteem, or this kid, this kid, this kid." And so, we're already seeing those correlations, which is, which has been, again, a school-wide thing, so that's great.
That's another good thing, that you all, everybody has their own family resource, Youth Service Center Director.
Listen, I can't brag enough, Ms. Rebecca can attest, Ms. Amy is in the, in the thick of everyone. We had that admin meeting, like, she is already, I've already done this, this, this. She's doing social, emotional groups, she's doing a self-esteem group, she's doing.
And it's conversations, not just in that meeting.
Yeah.
It's, yesterday at lunch, she was like, "Oh, I went out to so-and-so's house today, I talked about this." Like, so, it's just having those connections and knowing, because if they're not scoring a certain way, there's other problems that could be coming. It could be their attendance, it might be an issue at home, so we're all kind of just having those conversations. We also take time to celebrate, and we pick out teachers that are doing things that week that we saw that we want to brag on, and we try to go around that particular week and let that teacher know, so just to kind of build that esteem, I guess.
They're preaching your language, Mrs. Dameron, because that's what Ms. Dameron talks to folks a lot about.
Positivity.
Her, I'll say her programs, but all those things that interfere with learning, you know, the attendance and all those other issues, yep.
Yeah, and there's a lot of that to take in. And then, like I said, Ms. Rebecca's on here a couple of different times with all of the different things, but I will just go ahead and say, as in, having an instructional coach full-time has been a game changer for us as well. We've had a couple of teachers that were a little bit more resistant, not to just the Kagan, but this is the way I've done it, this is the way I like to do it, and we've seen some breakthroughs. We have seen so many teachers that have kind of been willing, but that willingness has come because Ms. Rebecca's been in the classrooms. There's no, she's never in her office, she's about like, "We're always in a classroom," but they're doing the things, they're trying the things. It's, it's truly been amazing, and I feel like we're going to see a lot of success, a lot of change next year. I think that comes from the communication that we have this year, I think it comes from the willingness of our staff, and I think that teachers know at any given time, I mean, the other day I looked up, and Ms. Faith and Ms. Rebecca and I were all doing centers in a classroom that we were not even scheduled to be in, but the teacher said, "Hey, I'm doing these, can you come help?" And we were like, "Absolutely." But there are conversations, those are our best dates, because we're seeing what's going on, and the kids are talking to us about it. And so, it's not that to say that we weren't doing some good things last year, I'm not saying that, but we have found some pieces to the puzzle that I think we're missing, and I really feel like that we're kind of meshing all that together, and it's become a team effort, it's no longer just one person. They know in that building that they can ask Ms. Rebecca for something as much as they can, anybody else, or myself. And that was the one thing when Ms. Rebecca came in, like, she's like, "I want to be in the classrooms," and I said, "The best advice that I have is, we're here to serve these kids and these teachers. We're not, we're not above them, we're kind of below them in the sense that we're here to serve." And so, we've taken on that mentality, and I think it's been an entire shift in the dynamics and what we're seeing this year. So, we look for a lot of good things to come. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and hopefully, if I've left anything out, Ms. Rebecca can jump in, but there's a lot of good going on.
Ms. Dick, this might be a good time, this is so unscripted, so she didn't know I was going to be calling on her, but just our number of increase in special education students. Ms. KJ referenced that, and for the first time ever, Salem has a unit for their students with modest severe disabilities, we had to add two units this school year. That might be just a good time for you to reference our increase of our students in special education.
We have had a large number, and not just kids coming in with speech, that's definitely coming out of COVID, but we've also, we are having a large number of students that come in from first steps. Maybe it's just being earlier identified with kids with significant needs, but we have six kids, at least, at least six in that unit out there, and I'm glad.
First steps is kind of like special ed's for barf, the charisma.
And those kids are transitioning to us, which is good, is one of the early intervention. But we have some kids with significant needs that still, if we have not had a teacher at Russell Springs, not, excuse me, not added a teacher at Salem, we would have 21 at Russell Springs. So, six of those kids actually were in the Salem district, and so, we're right back up to eight and nine in those classrooms at Russell Springs. Also at Salem, going back up, right, you gave me the sophomore. Also at Salem, um, going back up right to the opportunity, we've had three positions at Salem as far as special education, of course, going back to this sad situation of losing Miss Vanessa Burton. We did feel that we were able to get that deal last year.
When she passed away.
When she passed away with cancer. And so that was a very sad situation. Um, she started the year, and then we lost her to cancer. So in fact being said, that position was posted, but it was filled with substitute teachers. So it's about that we've added two of those special ed teachers, LBD positions. We actually had three off long, and then transferred to Miss Dana Ferguson out there. And so they got their fourth, uh, container for the sort of teacher, plus an MSD teacher. And we're working on filling that with a fully certified MSD teacher. We're just not a lot out there, to be honest. We, we had that posted. But we did have a little strong substitution, Ms. Jenny, and she's done a great job. And Ms. Christie Richardson agreed to go from preschool over to help her, because she had some good, um, background in that. Strong, which well, those kids are impatient. And so I really appreciate her. We don't really talk about how, but the aides do a good job. They add so much to the special education department. But that's, that's one of the things I felt like possible, Ms. KJ mentioned. But we've had the three teachers. Now we have the four. But our numbers are everywhere. And we've lost some kids who have gone to homeschool, certainly transferring in and out. And not sure where we're gonna run on the child count, but we have a large number.
Our needs of, of students that have significant complex needs is certainly growing. Our number for that is certainly growing.
We stayed right.
Every principal can attest to that.
And in the state, we can, of course, you know, kind of the transient population in the world is starting to move in. People have moved and stuff. We've had some people at Kagan from Florida that have relatives here. Uh, because of hurricane effect, we've sort of lots of things that are bringing kids to our district. But, yeah, we, we've got some challenges, but we're trying to address it the best we can and get people as quickly as we can. And my say, when we post moderate to severe disability teachers, they're just not all those out there. And so we somehow, we just have to wait. And you all will see that, I mean, draws information that that's being posted, and we just wait, and wait. And one time it's the same position that you're seeing.
Yeah, and as I said, it's been, it's been a blessing, like, to have the, the staff and the support, um, you know, just getting the extra one moved. And, and, you know, and then I'll just speak to what Ms. Amy said. Unless you're in the classroom, or unless you're in the school building, and you see what goes on in some of those classrooms, especially the MSD, um, Ms. Jenny and Ms. Christie have stepped up and made a phenomenal job. Ms. Christie came and offered to move over that, that position because she had experience, and, um, her and Ms. Jenny have just made, uh, quite a team. And two compassionate, Mrs. Rebecca can attest, I mean, positive, um, and that's a tough job.
It is.
But they both are so positive, and you never see that they're just, uh, they have meshed so well, but they've been really good with those kids.
Absolutely.
And like I said, then, that has kind of freed up our, our, and then the other teachers that we have, Mr. Anthony, Ms. Danielle, Ms. Dana, and, and Ms. Mary, um, they've really took on the challenge this year of being in those classrooms and having the opportunity to collaborate and co-teach. And that was a conversation we had to have with our regular education teachers as well, like, they're co-teachers. And I will say, I'll just, just because fourth grade the other day came and said, "Please don't ever let them go back to just being in the resource." Like, it has been amazing to have them in the classroom. Like, they'll jump in and say, "Hey, what about this?" She, Ms. Stacy Hoppers and Ms. Danielle said, "Can I, can I share something?" And she'll just chime in and just, and just start teaching as well. And that's what we want. And like I said, that's where I feel like we're gonna see those gains come back, because we've, we've been able to have that. So.
And I will say this, other than I can't say to any principal, this is thirty years from special education. I know that resources will not let scores. It is to supplement and add to, to give those kids the skills that they're not getting. The time to spend and work and maybe a belt. And once that happens, through collaboration happens, and they're giving like general instruction, and then they're going back to that resource room for a short time, and getting what they need, like institutional instruction and reading, not just going down the hall and doing the same thing, then you can really see gains. Like, Ms. KJ said that, because once teachers really see it work, they want it, but it's just sometimes a matter of changing the mindset. Like, there's a better change.
Well, that, that was our second half of our PowerPoint, the some, Ms. Rebecca sat there, and she goes, "Is this gonna go well?" And I was like, "I don't know, but it's gonna go one way or the other," I guess. And it really did. But I mean, it's, it is a different mindset. And like, we went back to the six ways that, you know, collaboration and co-teaching can happen.
I go back to my days spent with Ms. Heather, when she was a teacher at Jamestown. And, um, of course, my background's a special education teacher. I couldn't have that content expert, like, expertise like you're talking about, Ms. Dick. Ms. Heather had that. But I had some tools and tricks for special education kiddos. But to be in there with them and to be that co-teacher, um, that's where it really happens for our kiddos. And, and teachers welcome that with the support, but, you know, to provide that. So that, those were good days.
I agree. Like, say, with increased collaboration, I think you're seeing increased schools.
Oh, I think.
And I'd be glad, I'm so proud of Ms. KJ and Ms. Rebecca for just embracing that and saying, "This is what we need to make happen." Because, you know, sometimes it's a tool you had, if it's a safety of your scores or something, it's everybody on board.
Any central office admin or coach that's thought of something that Ms. KJ or Ms. Rebecca has made you think of that you want to mention before we go on to Jamestown? You know I'll interrupt you, Jack, Mr. Smith. Anybody thought of anything that, okay. Thank you all. Thank you so very much.
I was the first to respond.
No worries.
I didn't want to like get some leaving, everybody.
Ms. KJ had.
Yeah, I really had not just tried to dip out and not listen to everybody.
Good job, Ms. Rebecca.
All right. Um, so certainly Jamestown Elementary has a lot to, to celebrate in, in the field of KSA test scores. And all, all of that took place before I came. So I can't take credit for, uh, the Jamestown Elementary moving from a, a yellow status to a green status. Uh, but I tell you what, there's a lot more that's green at Jamestown Elementary than just our KSA indicator. We are a green staff, uh, but we are a wonderful staff.
He says green, he means new.
Yes. Green is new. Not green as in, you know, the candy hangover from, from Halloween and things like that.
He means new.
Okay. Uh, but yes, we are a green, we are a new staff. Uh, you know, four out of five of our special education team are new, uh, either to our building or new completely to special education. Uh, but I tell you what, the, the support that they've had on the district and school level has been wonderful. Ms. Vicky Kane, I cannot sing her praises enough. She, I told her, I said, "Do we need to find an office for you?" Uh, because she is doing some true on-the-job training with our, our special ed folks. Uh, we've got just a lot of new teachers, of course. Hello. And on that note, uh, I so much appreciate the opportunity to serve in Russell County, where I, where I've grown up and, and lived my entire life. Uh, never did I think that, that this is where I would land back to.
We're glad you landed back here.
Well, and I am too, you know. His plans are better than our plans.
Amen.
And, and my family is really leaning into that these days. Uh, but, but it, it's a blessing to be here and to serve at Jamestown Elementary. There are some truly wonderful, uh, people there. Of course, Ms. Susan is new in her role. Uh, and so we've got, we've got a lot to learn between the two of us. We have Ms. Lori, uh, and Ms. Megan, of course, that are, that are helping, helping to keep us, uh, on track with a lot of things. But, uh, I'll just, I'll just dig in right here to, to some test scores. So you can see there, uh, KSA celebrations, we're looking on the front side there with the, the big green emblem and, uh, some pictures on it. But we had, we showed growth in reading and math, grade three. Uh, and that was, from my understanding, due some, due to some very intentional, um, rescheduling, um, and really having, um, some intentional times to, to teach some basic math and reading skills, uh, with our students. And so the way that they had restructured that, I think Ms. Renee, uh, during her interim time, uh, really got some good things going in there. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna ride that boat too. We're gonna continue to, to make some of those conscious instructional decisions that are best for students. Uh, grade five reading, um, and grade five social studies, of course, we have, uh, new teachers in those areas. Well, new to their content, uh, and kind of new teachers in our grade five reading and our grade, grade five social studies this year. Uh, but I'm very proud of our fifth grade team and, and what they're doing and coming together. You can see them featured there at the bottom. Just a, a young and energized team that, that want to do and learn, uh, the true picture of what a good grade-level team looks like. Uh, and then there on our quality of school climate and safety survey, we saw growth in climate, growth in safety. And so we'll, we'll move on to what we are targeting. Uh, and of course, at the top of that list is our quality of school climate and safety survey. I told our staff at our data analysis day, I said, uh, certainly we saw growth, but I've been here long enough to know that this is, uh, that our school climate, it feels good to be in Jamestown. I feel like I, I say that, I should get it on a T-shirt or something. When people ask me how it's going, a lot of times I'll say, "I don't know, but it feels good." And I say that a lot because it truly does.
And what have I shared with you that your staff tell me, unsolicited, that it feels good?
It feels good.
They, they, they're having a good year, yeah.
Right. Uh, and, and so I, I think that that's a big part. That can show our quality of school climate and safety survey. And though that, that may not move you from, you know, in the, in the realm of KSA and in the realm of, of test scores and what things look like, like on paper, it certainly means a lot in here to anybody that's in that building. Uh, and so we, we're intentionally focusing on what that quality of school climate and safety survey looks like for our students, getting them familiar with that language early on, uh, but also keeping in mind that, that our teachers are doing this every single day. And I have no doubt that we are, you know, we are a safe school. Mr. Jamie, our school resource officer, is phenomenal. I come from a district where, uh, my school had not had a full-time SRO, uh, for two years. And it was a key element that, that our school was missing. Now, we knew it was safe. Uh, and our admin team certainly did a lot to ensure the safety of our students, but having that professionally trained, uh, and certified school resource officer means a whole lot, uh, to adults, to parents who leave their kids there every day, and they see Mr. Jamie when they're dropping their students off, he's standing right there at the front door. He's a part of our staff as much as anyone. Uh, and so we're thankful for.
Or you drive by, and he's on the exterior checking the doors, walking the hallway.
I get an email from him every day, uh, that tells me, uh, that our doors are secure. And perhaps if there are areas that we need to, to visit for safety concerns, then we can do that. Uh, and I appreciate that as a building leader, because that's one less thing that I have to think about, because I know he's covering. And he's gonna let me know what we need to do too. Uh, a, a big focus for us is our grade five content areas. And, and one reason for that being is, you can look over at our celebrations, and there's, and there wasn't a whole lot of celebration for our grade four. So now those grade four students are grade five students. And the state at this time is not necessarily looking at, uh, individual student growth, but more how one grade level performs against another. And so we know and could anticipate that we might be looking at a little bit of a dip there. Uh, so we're gonna be pouring a lot into the needs of what our good grade students are, because we've seen the data. The data shows those needs are there. We also see that with our, our grade three students after looking at our map scores. We're, you know, we know that they need a little extra, um, support. And so we've got some good things in place, having a three-teacher team there, where our third teacher, um, can also do some support, especially in some foundational reading and math. Uh, and we look at implementing that, uh, in the coming weeks as we approach Christmas. Uh, and then, of course, grade four science, we were in a position where, um, we wanted to be on board with the rest of the district with our grade four curriculum and, and content. We have Mr. Colton Greider serving as our grade four science teacher. Uh, we wanted him to feel like he could reach out to other teachers in the district and collaborate with them over a similar HQIR. So that meant that we, we had to do a little investing in some curriculum that put him on the same playing field as, as the rest of our district teachers for grade four science, because he's brand new. And we have to give him exactly what he needs. We have to equip him so that he can equip our students. And that's what, that's essentially, if you turn over to the backside of what, uh, Jamestown Elementary is doing, um, we're calling it our blueprint, uh, because, uh, if the state believes, calls it their moonshot, we believe we can, we can try to reach the top two. So I would love nothing more than to see Jamestown Elementary go from yellow to green to blue. And so it may be a difficult task, it may seem impossible, but our staff is speaking the language. In fact, on our data analysis day, each teacher or grade-level team, um, kind of filled out a template that was created by Ms. Susan, myself, our admin team, to how can we get that grade level or that classroom to what would be considered a, a blue status? So they completed their own blueprint, if you will, to get us to that blue. And it all centered around relationships, rigor, and routines. I don't know if you know Ms. Susan well, but you know that she loves some alliteration. So, relationships, rigor, routine. And that's gonna be the, the common talk within our building. So we had teachers identify, "What are you doing right now to build relationships?" You know, what are we as an admin team right now doing to build relationships with our staff? Because it's important. We need to make sure that our staff is well, so that they can do their job well. We need to make sure that they're equipped with the training, the resources that they need, so that they can equip our students with the knowledge and the learning that they need. So we're building positive rapport throughout JES. Today, we're celebrating the JES Jam, a monthly celebration. You can see a picture of that. Uh, and some lovely first grade students who won some prizes at our JES Jam.
Isn't today also like a taco bar?
Yeah, yeah, that's for our staff.
It's Taco-Bout in our great school.
We're Taco-Bouting, uh, a lot of great things at JES.
You know, success, and I've said this a lot, success breeds success, and you want more.
Yeah.
You know, and you have got green, and you want to build on that momentum.
Exactly, exactly. And so, you know, today what we're doing is we're celebrating students during their activity block. Um, if they've had excellent behavior, if they've done, um, what we would consider or call the JES way. It's kind of our, our new branding. It's being respectful, responsible, and safe. And if they've been respectful and responsible and safe all month long, they get to take part in that JES Jam. If maybe there's some areas where maybe they need a little bit of reteaching, they're spending some time with Ms. Lori, uh, myself, uh, and we're doing some intentional expectations teaching with those students on their behavior. Uh, because we want to reduce those barriers to support whole child, whole child growth. It's similar to what Ms. KJ is talking about. Our students, we need to make sure that they're fed. That way, that belly's not growling during math class, and that's not distracting them from learning. We need to make sure that they have appropriate clothes, that their shoes fit, and things like that. I'm thankful for Ms. Billy. Also, a new staff member at JES. She's our family resource center coordinator. And I'm thankful to have her devoted to my school. I'm thankful that she's in our building every day, um, to, to hone in to the needs of our students and our families. She's doing a phenomenal job in doing that. Uh, she meets with me regularly. I see her meeting with Ms. Lori, our counselor, regularly, uh, just to make sure that we're all in the know about what some of our student and family needs are.
Ms. Hold, he referenced, uh, belly's being fed, and we've just got recertification again for how many years?
Four years.
For, for four years of the community eligibility provision, to where all of our students will continue to get free introduced, or not free introduced, free, free breakfast and lunch for another four years.
I actually anticipate that being in the spring, getting another four-year renewal, because yes, just yesterday, we had our October reporting and our number increased.
Okay.
So it should be good for really five more years.
And you know, like Mr. Smith has referenced Mr. Rogers, and talking about the family resource center, and now talking about kids' bellies being, being fed. Again, all of what we're talking about today is important, and all of it plays a role for our students on the teaching and learning part. You know, we've got to take care of those other issues. Your ladies and gentlemen's got to feed our kids in the mornings, so they're ready to learn. So it's, it's all so crucial.
Very much so. Uh, and then, of course, in relationships, we want the students to know how to interact with each other. We're coming out of a time period where students did a lot of, of, either did or didn't, do a lot of individual learning, either with a screen or, or different things. And so we have to teach them how to, just like we teach them reading and math, we have to teach them how to act, and we have to teach them how to show respect. And we have to teach them how to show respect toward each other. And so cooperative learning, whether it's in an instructional vein or in just a, a relational team building vein, it's crucial for our kids to know how to have a conversation with someone. And then, you know, ask them what their favorite color is in first grade, just to get them talking to each other. Because we see a lot of kids who maybe aren't so willing to talk. And we have to provide an environment that, that is conducive for that. CAGEN has been big in our building especially to equip our new educators to have just some intentional cooperative learning strategies in their tool belt. It's not something that we're forcing them to do every day. They don't have to report out to us that, oh, I did a stand-up hand-up pair-up at 2:20, you know, before they loaded the buses for team building exercise. But we want them to know that we support them. And that's a huge part of what Ms. Susan is doing. Whether it's relationships or rigor or routines, Ms. Susan is spending a whole lot of time in classrooms. She comes to me and tells me, oh, I've seen some wonderful things in first grade and, and what they're doing there in their, in their reading centers. And, oh, I've, I've been to fifth grade and they are on fire in their writing. As you know, she's a, she's a writing guru. And so we're thankful for her knowledge and expertise there because she is helping equip all three of our fifth grade teachers to teach editing and mechanics, on-demand writing this year. You know, and, and supporting our teachers in digging into our high-quality instructional resources. I'm thankful that Ms. Susan, during our, our five days of planning at the beginning of the year, we called one day Susan Day. And it was all where Ms. Susan, who was new, new to her position, just, just bared her heart in what her goal and her vision for her role is, but also to talk about how she wants to support our teachers every day. And I see that every day in, in all of our administrators, but especially in the role that she serves because our staff feels like Ms. Susan is a coach. She's truly a coach. And a coach is there to support you. A coach is there to come alongside you and model and teach you things, teach you skills, the better way or a more appropriate way of doing things. And so I'm thankful that she's in our building.
You know, just think about that comparison to athletics. You don't ever get a team to the point that you just say, get on the field and play without a coach.
Right.
And if you, if you think about that and that growth mentality, obviously, our staff needs a coach. I mean, it just makes perfect sense. And because things grow and, and you have change and all those types of things. And again, we're just so thankful for each of you all, the coaches in this room. It's just phenomenal.
Yes. You know, because I think a lot of times as, as building leaders or principals, we're seen as evaluators. And a, a lot of what we have to do is evaluate our teachers. But what she gets to do after or before an evaluation maybe is she gets to come in and support, really load that teacher's wagon before they have to perform for an evaluator, you know? And of course, Ms. Megan and I try not to be, you know, super, super intense or, or stress our teachers out with those evaluations either. But just that extra level of support that we would, we would want for our students. And so we should want that for our educators too. I'm kind of all over the map at this point, but I'll get to routines. One thing that was important to me, and what I'm so thankful that our building has valued since me coming on board is just the relaunch of our PBIS initiatives. I come from a PBIS district and my understanding, Russell County is a PBIS district. And I really wanted a robust system for our school. And so we-
Talk a little bit about that acronym, Mr. Smith.
Sure. Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. Essentially, it's, it's what we do on a behavioral level, similar to how we have RTI, Response to Intervention for Reading and Math and things like that. It's, it's a vision of a whole child approach that our students need to be taught and understand how to act, what behaviors or maybe even a better word is what we expect for them. And so we reviewed our school-wide expectations. We even added one, Jamestown previously was, be respectful, be responsible. We added be safe to that because that's an important measure of what we expect in every situation, in every room, in every area of our campus. And so taking time to teach our students what we expect wherever they are in the building. And so we've got some new signage. It hits the, the JES Jam was born. And everyone has been so just on board with celebrating and teaching positive, positive behavior expectations. Provide consistency and minimize disruptions, which this week is probably not the best week to talk about that. But that's why we thought, well, we'll just extend Halloween and have our JES Jam, but giving our teachers intentional time to instruct our students with minimal disruptions, as, as few as possible. And then prioritizing student safety and along to create optimal opportunity.
Yes, I truly appreciate that.
We want our staff, we want everybody who walks in our building to have that good feeling that we have. And so we have to, we have to create a culture, culture environment for that. Our plan of action involves, you know, all of these things that I've mentioned already. And certainly our administration, leading by example in that, being in classrooms, being visible and being part of what's going on at Jamestown Elementary. We're very proud of it. And our teachers are phenomenal. There, a lot of them are new, some of them not so new, but I have seen just beautiful teamwork in our building. And I hope to continue to support and foster that however we need to.
Anything to take from Susan?
Well, I was just gonna say thank you. I love being part of this team, the district team, the coaching team. I love treasure the JES team. When I was interviewing for this position, I talked about three things, support, empower, and encourage. Right now, I think I'm heavy on the encourage and support.
I think you've got all three of those down.
But that is the JES way. It's, it's, it is. It's normal for me to be in your room. That's okay. That's just part of what we do. It's the JES way to use CAGEN. It's the JES way to use our HQIR to talk about that, to love kids. I mean, if we lead with love, we can't go wrong. And I think we're doing that at JES and that feels so good. So I'm thankful for the opportunity and I see great things happening. I call our staff my homeroom class. It's my biggest class I've never had. And so, but with that said, I mean that, I, I want to know them personally, professionally. I know their, their, their tricks in the classroom, all their attention grabbers, Sean Stevens when he says waterfall, shh. I mean, I know all those things. You know, like I want to know my people. And so I'm thankful for the relationships. Like I said, I think for me, support and encourage is where I am now. I look forward to empowering as we think about where we're headed at JES. So I see, I see great things. I'm thankful.
Yep, well, we appreciate it. Mrs. Dameron's had to step out.
I do have the best of brand. Everybody always has.
Mrs. Dameron's had to step out because she's got some corp things. She texted me and said, I feel like we're having church. We're jumping in upstream and doing the things that save kids before they're drowning and staff too. Yeah, so that's, that's really good. Two things that have came up that I wanna just briefly make certain that the board that you all understand, or we just don't take for granted some of the acronyms. And whoever wants to jump in, Ms. McFaul or some of the other coaches. Just real quickly, let's just talk about MAP and how that's used with data with the students and CAGEN. So we've thrown around CAGEN a lot. And you all heard us talk about CAGEN. And CAGEN is an expense that we've been paying at the district for some structures and some strategies with our teachers. It's been phenomenal. But who, who wants to talk about that? Just jump right in, Ms. McFaul. You're right across from it. So just briefly tell us about MAP and how the, how we utilize that in the district and then CAGEN, what we've been doing for CAGEN.
MAP is our universal sprayer. And we test kids three times a year in the fall, winter, and the spring. And it is very research-based. MAP is always tweaking things which makes you understand that they are right on top of the cutting edge. And it's giving you very precise and accurate data. And what this does is it's great to look at KSA scores. It gives a picture of how you're doing this at school, how individual kids are doing, but it's only a year. And even though we tested May, I mean, it's gotten a little better the last couple of years. We start seeing some student results in August. For a lot of times, you don't see big results until October and you're a grading period into the next school year. So you need data along the way. So that's what MAP is used for in the fall. It gives us a good temperature check of where our kids are, how we're doing as a content area, how we're doing as grade levels, which can even promote conversation between elevens and middle and middle and high. So you're not having to wait until the end of the school year to see these things. It's a great predictor. So we keep talking about all these kids who are in apprentice, you know, this group is so large and that's why it's spraying our scores down. And we didn't want kids to be at that proficient level. So it's that good understanding of, here's the group of kids that I do need to target. So that we don't wait until the end of the year and we're like, well, if we'd known that, we'd have done something about it. So academic-wise, this gives us checkpoints throughout the year. And it's very meaningful for teachers and PLCs and administrators to have those discussions so that we don't lose them. We don't let them fall through the cracks when we just didn't have that data. And I'll just say, upon that, with Senate Bill Nine, there is an ocean planet for our K3 students that we have added with Mapperian Fluency. It's a diagnostic that we have used now for two years. You wanna talk about overwhelming? It was quite overwhelming last year, starting to try to understand how that works, just how we administer it. But then looking at that data and what do we do with that data? But when we're talking about, you know, what we saw in grade two with our MAPS scores, that all these kids are really struggling. Okay, that's great to know. But if you don't know, there's so many different foundational skills within that, if you don't know which ones to target, then we're just kinda playing the guessing game. So that's the great thing about the diagnostic in Mapperian Fluency is it breaks down and it says, oh, this student is really struggling in front of him where it's, or decoding. So when like Ms. KJ was talking about her groups or, you know, just the support in the different grade levels or just our RTFOs in general, we know specifically what to hone in on. And we are starting to hone our skills on finding those good research-based strategies and materials to use with those students. Again, just like with our HQIRs, we're not having to go out and deep for all that. It's becoming more and more at our fingertips so that we are better equipped to make our students grow.
You referenced PLCs. Just briefly talk about what that looks like because I think that's just growing each year in our schools.
Right. Our professional learning communities within our schools. And sometimes it looks a little different. Sometimes it, you know, it, it's hard to schedule. The idea, the ideal is to have common planning for all of your, like, social studies teachers to be together, all your reading teachers to be together. That's easier said than done sometimes. But our schools have worked really hard over the last few years to make more intentional planning periods like that. But also it's grade level. So sometimes they even stay after school and it's grade level or it's even content areas that are getting together, talking about all these things the principals are talking about. They're looking at that individual student data, not just academic-wise, but they're looking at attendance. They're looking at social emotional leads. They're looking at behaviors. And they're saying, okay, what do we really need to target on? Because it may not really be an academic issue, but it's something at home going on that we can do something about. And then that's going to improve their academic performance. But it's just, basically, it's good conversations. It's intentional conversations. And, and it stems around a lot of different things. Just like Ms. Ruzak said, it's, it's not just behavior. It's not just attendance. But you have to look at the whole child. And then you also have to look at, you know, your faculty. And I think that's where a lot of that comes out too, when those teachers start talking about their needs. And it might be academic support with our coaches. It might be, what is it, hydration station? You know, it might be different things that you do, you know, taco bars, those types of things, massage chairs, you know, whatever they need to kinda get them through the day to you. Because our teachers need love and support to also offer that to their students. And CAGEN, we're gonna just talk a little bit about CAGEN. Qualitative Learning, when we first started, I think most people that heard about CAGEN, they know that it's very reputable. Lots of districts have seen great success when they have started incorporating these structures into their schools and their districts. But again, it's about the whole child. It's teaching kids and it's also teaching those how to just have conversations, how to behave, how to be respectful. All those things in turn, they'll produce discipline problems. Also, there's CAGEN structures that hone in on academics. So where we've had group work in the past and we've all been in a group before, and out of the four people, one person does all the work and you're just sitting there looking pretty and smiling and agreeing. And, and that one person takes the lead. And the CAGEN structure, it makes all kids a kettlebell. But they have been given so many strategies of how to make that happen in their classroom, from kindergarten to world growth. At what Ms. Ruzak said, and I think even Ms. KJ, it's something that we're not just making a checklist on and saying, you have to do this three times a week, or I want you to show me evidence of this, you know, two times a month. But again, our instructional coaches are working with teachers. They're going in, they're modeling things. When they're seeing a lesson, that's great. Let's tweak it. Let's use a CAGEN structure. And then the teachers see instantly how much better it can be. So then that brings that success and they want to do more of it. But we are continuing to have-
I know last year after our first two days, Mrs. Tardis, your teachers had said, I know, there's another day. There's a third day.
Yeah.
And, and I know while your staff was really instrumental as to why we added that day this summer, and then we've got another day.
Which is huge. And I'm not, not them, but it's huge for high school teachers to embrace something that they went into thinking was elementary. Knowing music, that's elementary. We're not ever gonna use that. But after the first training, okay, are we doing the next? Are we doing the next? Are we doing the next? We're on, we're in.
If teachers can see the benefit of that, they're asking for those next sessions. And then like, I know Dr. Mark Ruck spoke to my class the other evening and just shared how, you know, you can't do them all. You can't do all the structures, but you can fine-tune some of them.
We're stealing everything we're gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're saying, like, we're last and you keep stealing everything.
No, no. Okay.
You're like a fact-checking moderator.
Oh, oh. Anybody else before we transition to Russell Springs, besides me? Definitely not me. Okay.
All right.
Well, you can do a cricket machine like that, huh?
I call it my locals.
Your locals? Your locals machine?
All right. I said, all right. We are very excited at Russell Springs Elementary School to be a blue school again as far as the rating goes for KSA. But I wanted to dive into that. And it's been the common thread. It started with KJ and went through Zach and Susan. And it kinda pulling everything together. You know, we've said PBIS and MAP and this and that and trying to explain that. I think it does, a lot of that gets, gets lost, the lingo with people. So what does all that mean? But I wanna focus on, for one, how I feel like you, we got to where we got. And this was a process, like Zach said, before I got there, the grind of work being late. Jamie and them had started something there that used MAP, which a lot of people, you try to look at, I know from a board standpoint, am I getting the most bang out of my buck for all the things, programs that we wanna buy, that we wanna use and all this. Looking at MAP data through the year and looking at how we test the kids in the fall to kinda, again, see where they're at on target. And as it runs through the winter and the spring, if we have a PLC with our group and look at it as a faculty, I've got several grades that you would almost make a fortune teller is that will say, okay, I'm looking at these MAP scores. And I'm gonna tell you within one or two kids what my score is gonna be in the classroom. You're all as much, when Susan was there, it was, it was almost fine and tingly, to say, okay, I know little John Doe is gonna be proficient. Little Jane Doe is gonna be distinguished by looking at that MAP score and seeing the progression that they've made or the falling off that they had made. But they would take that a step further before the test would come. And again, I almost, you almost hate, it's almost like dangling a carrot to say, you need to do good on this test so I'll look good. We'll pat you on the back, but it's all for the school and all for the newspapers and this and that. But it's, again, it has to go back to relationships with these kids. You want them to do good so that that carries on when Susan gets- You want them to do good so that that carries on when Susan gets them, when Shannon gets them, so that they become productive members of society. So Jamie and them would start by everybody, all the administrators in the building would get a specific group of kids. And we would run through activities, schedules. We would take their MAP scores, study their MAP scores, see where they had started out in the fall, took theirsself into the spring. And then we would go pull those kids out individually, we would send a desk out in front of either Ms. Donna's class, Ms. Tori's class.
I've seen those meetings.
And we would pull those kids out of the hallway and kind of say, how's things going? And they may take you on a journey of forever and you just go with them. You don't want to say, okay, well, let's not talk about the nights yet, I'm here to talk about test scores. But it kind of revolved its way back into that to know, hey, Mr. Reynolds pulled me out, Ms. Jamie pulled me out, Ms. Stephanie's going to pull me out, Ms. Amy's going to pull me out, Ms. Heather. They really do care about you, they really do want to know what's going on in my life to see, we're here with you, we want you to do good. You may be, I've seen you work in class, I've heard the compliments that they've made about you. You're right there on that cusp of being proficient, you're right there to be distinguished. And it may be that little look to say, I can do this and I'm going to do better. But it's about having those relationships of, that the teachers have. And I, I would say that, that's probably one of the greatest strengths, I think, of, of Russell Springs. And again, coming out of upper grades as administrator lower is the relationships that the kids have with them. And I, I'll keep touting her, I look at the, the years that Susan spent in the building while I was there. That's, that's kind of how I see it is bought in, dedicated, not for show, heartfelt 100%. Loving all these kids to know, I think that's the greatest recipe, the greatest recipe for success at the school. So I, I say all that to say that we did score, uh, an eighty-three point seven, which puts us as one of the top 12% of elementary schools in the entire state of Kentucky. Something to be very proud of, an achievement that, that most schools would only dream of, uh, that we're making happen right here in Russell County. Um, breaking that on down, spotlight on achievement, uh, the combined writing, which was, is a huge piece for that, went up 12 percentage points in the previous year. Uh, Ms. Turner had said that Ms. Amanda had said she didn't think that she could ever cap or that we would ever cap where we were at with that score. And, and it went up a whole 12%. Uh, seventy-one point three percent of our students are proficient and distinguished in combined reading. And the science scores, which if you've seen anything on the news about how science is, uh, for instance, I, I know of a child who scored.
Smiling makes you do.
There's a child, uh, that almost, looking at a high school, almost scored a perfect ACT score that was barely an apprentice on the state science testing. There's no way a child who would do that would be. But we went up 10 percentage points, uh, on the science, increased in, in proficient, distinguished, went up 10% from forty-one to fifty-one. Uh, one of the biggest hurdles, I think, at Russell Springs Elementary School is our number of our EL learners. Uh, we see a huge influx in that with the industry that is around the northern half of our county and bleeding into Casey County. Uh, and, and a lot of times we get those kids, sometimes kind of all night kids that just show up. And then last year, I think after Christmas, we came off Christmas break and we got a waiting on us that spoke no English, ranging from preschool age up to fifth grade. And a lot of times it's so, so hard with those fourth and fifth grade age group EL kids come in. Because they're scared, they have enough knowledge in their mind, they've gained a wealth of vocabulary and their native tongue. Uh, they've came from a situation of they know everything that's going on around them, they're socially, they're socially accepted where they've been. And then they've been uprooted and put here to learn a whole new everything. Uh, I've always said a lot of times it's, it is, it's a whole lot easier to get those kids that are preschool K one age. Because you can kind of mince and mold them to where they don't have as big a learning gap as the fifth graders, uh, or fourth graders that come in. We have an excellent team of, of EL people, uh, like Tiffany and Mary Jo in our building. That work tirelessly to pull these kids out and to make sure they're getting what they got. She was another one that thought last year, made leaps and bounds with the score they got in the access test. Uh, that even went up again, we increased, uh, from sixty-eight point seven to seventy-three point five score, which is phenomenal. Uh, because I, I've said, at some point, no matter if it's Jamestown, if it's Salem, if it's the high school, if it's me. Those numbers are somehow going to catch you. When you're getting to a point that your population is getting into the teens and brushing the 20% line of EL, uh, it's going to catch you. But that's no reason to throw your hands up and go, well, I can't do anything with that, it's, I'm, I'm playing the hand I'm dealt. Uh, it's so unique to see, uh, and I know Tiffany is there for a purpose and I lean on her so much. But like, if somebody comes in and there's a problem, I can call her and go, hey, I need to get ahold of someone, someone, oh yeah. Well, her mom, she's, they moved her to second shift.
They know the family.
Yeah, she's like, her mom's moved to second shift, let me call her grandma's living, they threw it over on Bluebird, let me get ahold of her and she'll know how to get somebody. And it's just like, I can spout any of those kids off and that's the response I get. Again, it goes back to relationships. I think those relationships that Tiffany has built with them, that Mary Jo builds with them, that kind of gets it to where, that's why you can see the increase in scores. Uh, the continued spotlight success, we are also proud that we've scored above the state average in all our tested areas, three through five. That is a huge accomplishment, I think, holistically to, to be above that state average. Science, social studies and writing, uh, across the board increased to four point two percentage points. And even though this next number looks small, it's huge. Fourth grade reading had a 2% gain in novice production. Anytime that we can get those children out of that novice category into a friend is showing that growth, um, I'll, I'll take that every day of the week. Uh, because that, a lot of times that goes back to like what I was just talking about, the EL below socioeconomic, those kids, excuse me, that are not, that you see that you don't feel are supported enough externally outside of what they're getting in, in, inside the walls of their classroom. So to see that 2% gain is great and they want to see that number go backwards. The quality of school climate and safety survey remained in the green status. Uh, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heather to talk about best practice protocols that we are going to institute and have been as an administrative team in our building.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to, we're going to look at the two last, um, points there on your paper. Um, we're, we're echoing what everyone else has said, um, and what Kevin has just said. The second bullet, that's what I'm starting from because that's the foundation of our school. Um, everything comes from that and that is that positive school climate that's imperative for that high achievement status, academic status. You're not going to have that without that positive school climate. And there's many ways, many ways we've cultivated that. Um, but one of the ways that it's not spoke about, it's, it's not measured in numbers. And, um, Mr. Reynolds laid the foundation for that and I know I appreciate it. And that is giving the teachers the autonomy they need to teach in a creative way. Because when you approach a veteran teacher that has twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-six years of experience, that, you have to approach that differently. They've been through many cycles of KDE testing, many cycles of curriculum, um, you know, purchases. And they are a wealth of knowledge, they know how to vet the materials. And so you can't really have your thumb on them, you, you know, that you've got to give them parameters to work within. And I think he's done a wonderful job in that, it's like, and, and the rest of administration team has as well. You know, here's your parameters, you have your standards, um, we want those kids engaged with the Pagan structures. So within these parameters, I'm going to allow you to be creative. And because there's many, many different ways, and Kevin always has some kind of saying, what, skin patch? Uh, but there's many, many ways to go about teaching effectively to get the kids to learn at high levels, it's going to look different. Um, so that's one of the ways. Um, and then we're going to move on down, uh, we're empowering our teachers, um, to provide that release time. I know Salem talked about that, it's worth its weight in gold, it really, really is. With all the, um, issues that they have to deal with in a day, and we spoke about that, far beyond academic, far beyond academic. It's very heavy and very weighty and for them to be able to really hone their craft, they need some release time. And this is something we've started, uh, we started with our new teachers and we're expanding. And what they are going to do is I go into their classroom and I'll teach for one to two hours. They go observe, uh, one of the very highly skilled educators that we have in the, uh, building. And we have, you can attest that, many choices for them to go and see what good teaching looks like. So, um, I'm providing that and I am benefiting as well. Because I can see what I need to help the teachers teach their kids better. So it's, it's, it's really a win-win situation for both of us. And I just think it's an essential practice to help us maintain our blue rating, I, I really do. Um, and another additional practice, uh, best practice protocol, um, to allow teachers to hone their craft is we have seven teachers that have volunteered for the KDE reading academies. And you might not be familiar with that, but, um, it is, it is free for any teacher K five. It's a two-year course and it's, I, I've been through it, I finished it, it's pretty intense. And so to think about teachers having to teach all day, you know, and what they have to do after school, it is a lot to ask of them. Um, yes, they're receiving a stipend, but again, there's a lot to it. And so many of the teachers, they felt overwhelmed. So we met, we said, okay, what can we do? And I said, all right, I know I can come in there, teach your, uh, class for the day, you come to my office. And, and you can really concentrate, no interruptions, no distractions, really be focused on the science of reading. Because we have a large number of very fragile, very vulnerable readers. And that, that need that expert teaching. And this reading academy is providing it. And I'm so, so very excited for the teachers that are really just diving in and, and making the most of this KDE reading academy, I really am.
And it is a lot of work, but they can been, they feel like it is worth it, that it's really.
Yes.
The meat and potatoes of what they eat, it's not a lot of fluff, it's not, it's everything that they feel like will make them better. And a lot of them are gaining a rating through it.
Yes, we have four teachers.
They're very cut ranks.
Yes. What about a four?
Yeah, probably a four, plus the cost of them to get a rank change.
Yeah. Um, and again, it's helping me too, so I can see, I was in a first grade classroom the other day and it's just amazing what first grade, these little b's, six-year-old kids. And the math lesson out of our HQIR, out of our Envision program, um, they literally, I had them getting groups, collect data, make a tally chart and graph it. That's what we did. And I was like, oh my gosh, this is, I don't know, I started sweating, I was like, I don't know if they can do that. Watched a couple of videos, uh, modeled it and then I just released them and they just did it. And I was like, this is great, but it is, um, it's just amazing to see where the kids are at, at such a young age. Um, you know, when just a year before they came to school and, you know, they couldn't even, they couldn't even read, they didn't even know some of their colors. So it, it, it's been very, very great. And then lastly, the two other, and you can see that, I think it's the last bullet, um, on your paper. The two other important components we feel have directly impacted our achievement. And, and again, we're just echoing what everyone else has said, it's a high quality instructional resources. We're in year three of using the curriculum that we adopted. Uh, we have K five Envision, K through two Into Reading Program, and then MyView for three, uh, through five for reading.
And we're consistent with that curriculum now across the district too. If first grade Russell Springs is using it, first grade, if Jamestown's using it, first grade Salem using it. So it's not a hodgepodge, for using lack of term, across the district as well.
Yeah, because we have all those transient students that move from school to school to school, so, yeah, it's been beneficial in, in that way. Um, and, um, oh, and high yield instructional strategies. And, um, like with the Pagan structures, again, um, just a repeat of whatever one else has said. But we really work on those in PLCs, they're thoroughly discussed, they're modeled, you know, teachers really, sometimes are a little uncomfortable. But we have them model how to do a lot of these strategies, so then they know how to go back and, and use that with the kids. So we have a lot of best practices in place and I think it, it shows.
I'll say another, real quick, not that I forgot, but the, the hundred day people that I'm allowed to have through the, the schedule that Jesse makes score. Are all retired teachers that probably two hundred years of experience that I've got, that are doing the pullouts for the RTI. That to me is another critical component for why this is the way it is on paper. Uh, is getting those kids out and refining everything for them as, as the year goes on. They're on a set schedule, they know when they go with one of those ladies, they go in there, they get it done and it's become, they just know, they know that that is their schedule. And that has been, I feel like, a tremendous help. We tweak our schedule to where we get them four days a week and there's no interruption. And I check it so, on this year, for a long time, which you will be coming back to me in short term. And I mean, you know, to have five ladies that are, were well mid twenties, low thirty-year employees in the district, you can't get that everywhere. So I appreciate that we're able to as a district to have the money, to have the means to pay for that great money.
And part of that, and Ms. Jamie, I was going to have you talk about something, Mr. Reynolds, or a few things Mr. Reynolds had mentioned and Ms. Heather. Um, he mentioned programs and how the federal, your, your department supports those types of things. And he's referencing these hundred day people. And I know ESS daytime waiver, Miss Mayfall does part of that, but that's part of our federal money for the intervention, if you don't care just to talk, touch on those.
Well, I'm new to this position, going through the budget.
You've hit the ground running.
Yes, but going through this budget, I'm excited to see what we can offer the schools and how we benefit the schools. I mean, these teachers that we pay for to help with the class sizes, the class reductions, the daytime waiver people that we can offer each school to bring in to do RTI. Um, the online programs is amazing that we supply for. Uh, so that all that helps the teachers with their HQIRs, with their, you know, learning this, you know, learning the content, that helps them for that support. Um, but also, um, I'm just excited to hear about the support and the relationships that you're doing in each building. Because that's where it's all at. Even going home this week, Aubrey Kate mentioned relationships unprompted and she was like, the relationships with the teacher is what does it work. That's what gets me excited.
It is.
So for her to say that at seventh grader is a big deal because that's what it does for her. It makes her want to do things and that's how she succeeds. So it's all about relationships and how you deal with that in your building and how you incorporate that into your academics.
We're molding Aubrey Kate in that room at the offices, she sets in and admin meetings and, and different things, talks about Title One budget, comparability report. We get her input on a lot of different goals. She's going to make certain of Christmas trees in her office and just certain different things, yeah. She's awesome. Thank you, Ms. Jamie. This might be also, Mr. God, we put you on the spot, we was talking about programs and the technology part behind it. Um, there's a lot of support from, from your end on, on that. And also that big bird's eye view of, of connecting things on the, on the technology side and incorporating that in classrooms and PLCs when we're doing certain things. If you want to touch on some of that, um, right now.
Well, one thing I was going to mention is that, uh, you know, we're, and Ms. Boils will, uh, can chime in on this too. We're required now to, to post the data, the, the testing results at the top of the district webpage and on the each school's page. And so, uh, every, every district does that now. And, and just the attention to that accountability, I think, uh, overall is a good thing. And, uh, just for, just for public awareness, just for motivation too, I think, incentive to succeed. So, um, and it was made easy for us, us to do that, and so there's going to be an update soon, right?
It was for me, I said, you.
A little bit of a learning curve, but no big deal.
But you did very well.
And he had to change it just within a few weeks with the new data. They wanted to see, put the old twenty-three data in there, but then when the new twenty-four came out, which was, well, it took a couple of months, I guess. And then it, it hit on the, on the script, on, you know, bit of time in there.
But he referenced the new site that should be out sometime this month.
Yeah, no problem.
From the State Department, more so than what they've had in the past to where the data is a little bit easier to look at.
That was a new requirement that they, and so they send certain. That was a new requirement that they, and so they send certain, it had to be in on the top banner of each page. They were stickler on that, I believe. Mr. Boyd, I felt like they were gonna, you know, it had to be that way. So he worked, thank you for your good work on that, appreciate it, it looks good.
He's a fabulous good manager.
I take that to you.
Okay. Ms. Heather, anything else?
No, we're just, you know, we're, all the things we talked about, we're just looking for a great year ahead.
For members of you to oblige me, I'd like to help the transition from elementary to secondary. So each one of you are sitting next to people. And I'd like for you to just take a minute real quick and to think about the things that you heard the elementary shared and some items that have really stuck out that they said. So just take a minute, kind of get those thoughts together. We're sitting next to someone that we would call a shoulder partner. So I would like for you to, we're gonna do a quick pair share. And I'm gonna let you share with your shoulder partner something that's really stuck with you that's been said. I would like for the shoulder partner, just to make sure you know your shoulder partners. You two will be shoulder partners. Our ladies.
Mrs. Tarter's telling.
Just down there. The shoulder partner that is closest to the wall. Rebecca will share first. So if you will, very quickly, let your partner know something that stood out to you. And when they're done, the other partner will share what they know. So I'm gonna let you all go ahead and just tell each other something that really stuck out from the elementary.
She's using the Kagan structure.
That's right.
Look at your charts.
Yes, absolutely. I like it real. It's not just there.
Did you all find something that stuck out from the elementary schools?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to share?
The relationships and the support that the schools are having from the coaches.
Okay, so as Mr. Ford said, that was a really quick pair share from Kagan. Didn't spend a lot of time going through the rules of it, but you all did a great job. And just to let everybody else in the room know, I used proximity to make sure they were actually doing what I'd asked and following the structures.
I turned around, there she was.
Well, I mean, that's what you gotta do. But just so you all know, relationships, the elementary that shared relationships really stuck out to them and how important that is in all of your buildings. Now, now we have a little bit of a break and a little bit of a transition as we move into secondary.
That was good.
Okay. It was Ms. Tarter's idea, she looked over, she goes, how about we do a Kagan structure? I was like, okay. She said, oh yeah. Everyone here has talked about Kagan. And Ms. Mayfall can tell you, you know, it's a program we do in the summer. And I just thought, let's do a couple of strategies right here to show the board and everyone else that everybody here knows, how quickly it can be implemented in the classroom. Seriously, as we're going around, I just leaned over and I said, hey, what? Because we talked about it. So it's a quick way to check in the classroom. It's a quick way if you see something's not going the way you want it to, or we need a transition, or moving to something else, let's talk about what we, you talk with your shoulder partner what we've just done and then share it and we'll go on. Now in the classroom, you know, you would, what did you all talk about? What did you all talk about? What did you all talk about? And that develops conversation, discussion in the classroom. So I just thought, if you all just see what a Kagan structure is, and that's a simple one. There's, as we said, there are tons of them. But that's what's going on in our classrooms all across the district, you know. So as, but you come to our school and you're always invited to come in and watch, that's what you're gonna see. And sometimes it may look a little chaotic, because it is student-led. It is, they're learning from each other and sharing papers back and forth. But that's what's going on. And it is district-wide, and we are seeing it. And I am, I guess, the old dog here. So they say you can't teach an old dog new tricks.
I don't believe it.
I don't believe it, because we're teaching new tricks at the high school. And at the top of the page, it says, and we're proud of our teachers and students. I am so proud of what I'm seeing at the high school, what I'm hearing. And in notable teacher and student motivation, teachers are reaching out at the high school. I've had three texts while I've been here. I need to talk to you about this, come to my room. Can you come down here? And it's not, it's academic, it's not about discipline, it's not about anything like that. They want me to see this, or they want me to look at this, or what do you think about that? That's huge. That is huge. And I think we see in our results that it is working. Got no lies to tell you. I actually had a thoughtful, we might be blue this year. I really did, I thought we were so close.
I think we were together and I knew they'd been out that morning. And you hadn't had the opportunity to look at them yet.
Yeah. But we made improvements to where last year, and you can see on here, we had some yellows, we had some oranges. We are solid green across the board now, solid. And we even have some blues to add in, so that's great. We're making the strides. Our reading and math, we maintained and improved from last year. We maintain the green. If you look over at, probably one of the things we've talked about most here is our climate survey. That was orange last year. We increased it by six points to a ninety-two percent of our students at the high school said teachers expect the best of me. So that is just significant. The expectations are there, you're seeing the intentional instruction. The kids are being successful, but we're also celebrating that and shouting about that. And teachers are congratulating them and talking to them. And again, it goes back to the relationships. Post-secondary, we're always proud of our post-secondary results. They were blue, they maintained blue with an indicator score of one oh four point nine. Now that's, that's up. It's good to be blue, it's good to maintain, but when you're blue and you go up.
Mr. Radio.
One oh four point nine, like our country, WJRS. That's right. Good morning, you're on the trading post.
Hey, I can do the headline.
But that's huge. And our post-secondary would be our dual credit classes, our certifications, our, Ms. Rena can jump in here.
Career tech.
Career tech, CTE.
Industry certifications.
Certifications, internships, co-ops, work base. ACT is included in there. Our ACT scores went up from last year. I think last year was seventeen point eight, this year it's eighteen point two. So we are so proud of that. Our graduation rate maintained a green status with a ninety-four point eight. We were, had huge increases in social studies and writing, and you can see that on there. Again, we can talk about the science scores, but we know how those are. Statewide, there is an issue with that. You can say the test is off, the state test is off, but then again, we have to get prepared for that, whatever it is. Our ACT science score was eighteen point six, which, you know, they're boiling the ACT part out of the water as far as.
But even our commissioner said, I'll paraphrase, there's something wrong with the science test.
It is. You know, and our science department, we have a wonderful science department. They were crushed, but they immediately went into fix-it mode. Okay, all right, okay, okay. And they've done that for all these, it's the last several years. They went into HQIR before we even brought that up, they wanted that curriculum. And so they immediately said, we met with them, we talked with them, and they're in that mode right now. They jumped right in before we could even talk to any other departments. So we've got good things going on there. Our areas of growth, we're pretty much on track. Of course, we want to get to that blue status. We want to get there, and we think we're making that happen. As, we've talked about relationships, and that's, you know, one of the first things I said when I took this position about building relationships and how important they are. And that's hard at high school level. I think I say this every time we meet. They're big, big kids, you know, adult-looking, but they're still kids. And they still want a pat on the back. And they still want you to comment, like somebody said, you know, oh, you colored that paper really well. They still want you to comment and they want you to notice. And we've got kids who have hard times, hard times. Everybody has a story, everybody has something that has happened in their lives or, you know, whatever that's, everybody in this building that's made you who you are. If you get to know their stories, if you get to know their stories, then you can get the relationship, you can build the trust. And we're doing that at the high school, students are getting a story. Ms. KJ talked about, talked about JMo and the support they got. You know, she's school people, she's family with us. But that's happening in high school with all of our kids. I get an email, get this, you know, be aware, know this has happened. I tell their teachers and they're checking on them, they're working on them. And again, that's kind of a big deal at the high school. We're not known to be loving it. I mean, we're in our content, we're teaching our content. This is what we're doing, this is our department, crunk, crunk, crunk. And I'm starting to see that crumble just growing. Mainly because we did intentionally change our schedule to have common planning time for our departments. And it's easier for us somewhat. All of our departments have common planning time. They meet each week, well, they have it every day, but each week they have an intentional PLC, Thursdays, PLC content review test, whatever they're gonna have. And the conversations are real. And they're amazing to sit with. And Brooke can go into that a little bit more, she gets in there a little bit more than I do. But that's working. We have the monthly admin PLC with teachers, where we meet as a group to talk about different things. So that's all part of it. And I don't want to get into your area, because I am, I'm getting in there. Some incentives we did, you can look at that, the yard signs, you may have been driving around.
That is, I really love that.
And you see, you know, well, if you look at that, we had seventy-three last year, we had a hundred and nine this year.
And that means they scored distinguished. So if they got a yard sign, they scored distinguished on an area.
You should get a lot of yards.
So every time.
I appreciate it.
So Ms. Tarter, the kids love the recognition, their families love the recognition. I think our community.
If we do it, if we put the, as soon, the day the data is released, we, of course, we have to look at it a little earlier, but as soon as it's public, we send an army out. While the kids are at school, parents aren't at work. So they come home and that sign is in the yard. They don't know it's coming. It's like, oh, you know, there it is. I think they spent about five hours delivering signs. They did. But they worked, they got it mapped out, they got it, you know, they know where they're going. You're going Jamestown, I'm going here, you're going here. And they get it done. Lunch passes, when we ask our high school kids, what rewards would you like? And it's high school kids, you know, you don't know what you're gonna get. Lunch passes, that was the big thing. And what that is, again, based upon your overs, you can get a pass. We have the dates scheduled, you can't just go whenever you want to, there's certain days we allow that. You can leave and go to lunch and come back and be back by your next class. Amazing you could say that. We had three hundred and twelve last year, we had five hundred and five this year. Lots of proficient distinguishes. And so, and we had the first lunch pass the other day. We also have, you know, students who can't drive, so we provide a bus for those kids. If they can't drive, we have a bus out there, they take them to the McDonald's area. They go to McDonald's, Subway, Mexican, you know, I think I told last year, Coach Rexro drove the bus. He was a little misguided on what he was supposed to do, he didn't give enough instruction. So he took each child to the place they wanted to go. Well, at the next class started, we said, where's the bus? Where's Coach Rexro? And he pulled up finally, and he said, well, that one wanted to go to McDonald's and that one wanted to go to Dairy Queen. Okay, you're supposed to stop at one location. But that's Coach Rexro, and gosh, you learned it. So if you want to go to Dairy Queen, well, yeah, we'll drive on over. It's no problem. And it wasn't, it was fine. But that's just some, some good things are going on. And if you look at the top Greck high schools, we're there, out of forty-five schools, we're the top. And we have them listed there with a seventy-five point nine, so.
As I shared at the last school board meeting, you know, Greck is forty-eight, I think forty-eight districts. And our combined indicator rate for elementary, middle and high is higher than Greck's average, which, I mean, that's significant.
That is, it is.
That is significant. Every level, elementary, middle and high were higher.
So good things are happening. We look forward to where we're going. We're not there yet, but we're taking those little steps to get there. And I'll, let's go to bed now.
Oh gosh, where do we even start? So many of the things have already been said, so I won't get into a lot of the details. I'll just let you know that we're doing some of what they're doing. But the weekly PLCs, those happen every Thursday. They know they're happening. The admin ones are once a month, they're the first Thursday of every month. And that's where everybody, the whole admin team is in there with every teacher that has planning. And we're doing some data work, we may be getting student issues, there's a different agenda every time for that. But it's consistent, and they know that we come in there, every Thursday, we have that time together as a faculty. On the other Thursdays, science, social studies, math and reading will meet. And I go in there with the department heads and together as a team, the department head and myself will lead those. They go anywhere from, again, looking at data, looking at concerns.
Just so we're clear, talk about what a department head looks like for middle, I mean, high school.
For high school?
Yeah, when you say department head.
So each department has a leader, someone that helps kind of keep everybody together.
By their content.
Yes, for each content. So math, science, social studies and reading each have a leader for that team within the content. Just for an example, this week, we do lots of different things in the PLCs. But this week and last week, they got to kind of choose which topic they wanted which week. We did Kaganizing. So what you all just saw was a Kaganizing of this meeting. So it worked out really great when she asked about that. I was like, that's perfect, that'll make what I'm gonna tell them make sense. So I'm going into each classroom, actually the middle and the high. And going in there, the teachers tell me a time that they feel comfortable. There is no special lesson planned. And you just go in there and we look at the lesson during the planning. And we're like, okay, five minutes, this is what you have planned, let's throw Kagan in here. How we just threw Kagan into this meeting, that's what we're doing with their content, so that no children are hiding. Everybody in there is involved. All six of you all were involved in remembering something that was said. You had that medico mission, you thought about your thinking. And that's what the teachers and I are doing. And we're co-teaching. The teachers are still teaching their content, I'm just jumping in with the structure. I'm just jumping in to say to the students how it's supposed to go and help guiding them through that process so the teacher can see how it's done without feeling nervous about the first time they're gonna do a structure that they're not really prepared to do. But in those PLCs, we plan that. ELA at the high school came to me, the department head, Ms. Bethany York, and she came to me and she said, there's just so many. And the district was very gracious and they bought these, I should have brought one of those great pink foldouts. We have a great big white Kagan book, but this foldout is really nice and it has everything, really easy to look at. So we all brought those little pink ones and Ms. York said, we really just want to pick three. Can we just pick three and really focus and get those three really, really good? And once we do those well, let's start having. It's like, of course. And she said, can you help us pick the three? So we went in and at PLC, and that's what we worked on, we worked on picking the three. And I simply gave advice like, well, you may want to have one that's a pair activity. And then you, where it's just two people working, but you may want one that's a team activity, because they have tables in there. And so they could kind of judge what to use. We used information from Skip Clebender from Greck. Ms. Tarter had reached out to Ms. Tanya when Ms. Tanya was here, the teachers need, they need help with EL. They need help with EL at the high school. I know we do district-wide, but they're begging for help with EL. And so they reached out and got Skip. And he's actually ended up, because the need was so great, he didn't just come to the high school, he's gone to all the schools. But one of the things he talked about with Kagan is to use a structure that requires some sort of writing, whether it's in English or Spanish or whatever the native language is. is before they have to speak. So you have time to get your thoughts together. It may take those students a little longer because not only are they doing achievement type of thinking, but they're also having to think about it in language terms. So they have a little extra. Use a structure that has the writing. So that was kind of some advice to the EL. So when they chose the three structures, they chose some that have writing also in there, so they would get more bang for their buck. Math things, Molly Blankenship is the department head for math. And she said, you know, we're not set up with tables. We can turn desks, yes, but you know, we've got robes, you can get a little, the classes are a little bit big. Till Christmas, can we concentrate on pair structures? And let's master working in pairs first and get comfortable there, and then we'll start doing tables. Perfect. But these are the types of conversations that are happening in those PLCs.
But see, we've talked a lot about relationships with students and our teachers, but board members, I would just want you all to see the relationship with the teachers and our instructional coaches. Dr. Bartra referenced, the department head came to me and said this, department head came to me and said, can we do this? It's been so instrumental. And Dr. Bartra, we split between both of them, middle school and high school, that's probably why you all got her set between you. And that's something that we want to talk with you all for next year, is that we have one specific for middle school and high school, because it is hard. And both, both schools have a lot of new staff and you all, all support new staff a lot. That's been a key part for instructional coaches, is to support the new staff, but it's, it's instrumental. And it is, it is, I'll say it, it is difficult for Dr. Bartra with both schools. She does a phenomenal job, but it's a lot, it's a lot with both, both schools.
We're doing stuff with math, I feel like now, I feel like I have to say every department head because I don't want to just, I'm just on two. But really, Ms. Kelly Kelsey, just in the PLC this week, their science, all the contents have been doing it, but science has had a full week to understand what they looked at last week. We're looking at the KSA release items. So what KSA does is they release some of the items from the test, and they provide those questions, they provide the answers our children gave. So these teachers can go in and see, what did our kiddos answer? Now, they don't get our extended response and we don't get the short answer, but we get generic ones. We get real answers from students across the whole state. What is a zero, what is a one, what is a two? And then we get feedback from KDE that will quote the students' work and say, this was inconsistent with what it's doing. Or there was a fourth grade math one, which I know is not high school, but I was using it for another purpose, so it's in my head, that had a quadrilateral. And they didn't score the four points, well, the two points possible for this because they did not mention that it was all angles when they said ninety degrees. They mentioned angles were ninety degrees, but the important thing about a rectangle is all four of them are ninety degrees. And KDE specifically said that. So our science teachers are getting in there and they're, they're doing that kind of work, finding it out. Ms. Kelsey, one was on direct and indirect relationships and, actually, my child, but we were looking at who missed this multiple select question. And something came up really good in the PLC that, you know, we need to give more multiple select questions in science. We're giving extended response, we're giving short answer, we're giving multiple choice, which is where they just pick one answer. Multiple select, they have to pick multiple answers. And our students in science aren't seeing that, so that's something they're gonna ask. And yes, they are devastated with scoring, but aligned with the state, it's pretty devastating statewide where high school science is, middle school science also. I mean, it's just, it is not in a good place. Science teachers are still, well, what can we do? That's not an excuse. We still want to get better. Math, we do a lot with math, the teachers are tracking their math. Bubble students last year, so the teachers always do a name and claim, and we talked about this last year. But then at the end of the year, admin wins, and we did a name and claim with those spring scores, the last, the last push. And so myself, all the counselors, including Ms. Rixson, the college of career readiness counselor, and all the, the three admins, all picked specific students. The list went around, and these are the kids that are so close. We all went and picked five kids from each content area and had real conversations with them. We sat next to them, we talked about them, we asked what could happen. Those children were picked not only from their math score, we went into those PLCs and we said, here's the list of kids that are close. You tell us who you think we would have an impact on. So the content teacher said, I think this kid, this kid, this kid, and this kid would benefit from conversation with someone. And that's how those bubble kids were chosen. So it was a team effort, it wasn't just going in, and it was data-driven, but it was also a team effort, so that those teachers know that they're in there with us, you know, helping us pick and do that. So that's targeting, we talked about Kagan modeling. Last year, we started positive feedback, this actually goes on at both schools. Rutherford with Artisan Learning talked about it, but it's going into a classroom, you're only in there very short, but you're only telling them something really good that you saw. And I think that especially in the high school, this was a game changer for me as an instructional coach, because it built so many relationships. I was able to go in and just tell them what was some great stuff that I saw and some great stuff that they were doing. It was very intentional, specific students, specific activities, and I think doors just started opening from there. Teachers started reaching out, they knew we were a team. I always talk about, when you ask for an instructional coach, Mr. Ford used a sports analogy, I thought he was gonna steal another thing from me, but it was a different analogy. I always tell him when you think of a coach, you know, my daughter, she plays basketball, and if I needed to get her some, an instructional coach, if I wanted to get her some extra help, she's like an amazing free throw shooter. She shoots well over eighty percent free throws, really good. I'm not gonna go and spend money on a free throw coach for her. I'm gonna go spend money on something that she needs to grow in. And so when I talk to the teachers, that's one thing I tell them, that analogy, and I was like, so what do you want growth in? What class do you want to see growth in? And so they've started reaching out to me for some of the, some of the more difficult classes to come in, but I asked for it, so bring it on. But that's, that's the truth of it, that's, that's where we want to see, where we want to see the growth in. Those relationships are important. It's important with the students, but it is very important with the teachers. Especially as Ms. Heather referenced, those that have been around for a while and they know what they're doing, you have to build those relationships with them first. You can't just come in and say, change this, this, and this. You have to be a support and build those relationships. And that's what the high school's doing. And the last thing on here, I really thought Ms. Carter was gonna jump in and do this one, because, I mean, it's, it's been pretty amazing that there's no phone calls in the high school. And it was a little iffy when it was going forward. I got to see how wonderful it worked at the middle school, so I was very, very excited. But it's different. The halls are noisy, kids are talking in between class, they don't have a phone to look at. Kagan structures are going better because they don't have a phone to pull out. They're listening to the content, they're participating, very few complaints about it anymore. Really, not really any. I don't hear any of them saying, I don't, I can't believe I can't have my phone there.
As the norm. And when they, now it's not a one-hundred percent perfect. If we knew, we weren't gonna get a hundred percent perfect. But basically, to summarize the policy, we have, we have where they put it in first period. We know as high schoolers, they were all gonna do that. Not all gonna do that. The basketball team, girls' basketball team, great bunch of girls, you know, they were gonna be rebels, they were gonna be bad. And they said, well, we're not putting our phones in the box, because we're gonna leave them in our cars. And I went, do it. Because you're still not gonna have, but go ahead. And we do. And a lot of kids leave them in their cars, and that's fine. But if we see it, we're gonna take it. And we've not had, oh, we're weapons of that, but when we do take it, there's never been a argument about it. There's like, there you go, you know, here it is. Rare occasions when we get to the level that a parent has to come get it, the parent's support's been phenomenal, you won't have this problem again. And we haven't. Teachers are saying, I'm seeing eyes, they're making eye contact, they're focused. And so we think that will have an impact.
You've heard me say this before, but I love the story of the young lady that told you, Ms. Carter, I went home and I was hoarse because I talked.
She said, I was hoarse because I've talked all day. And my throat hurt, because, I tell you, and Susan's got, what?
I love that story.
I know, but she's like, oh, I'm so hoarse. She said, I've talked all day. You go in the cafeteria and they're eating lunch, first of all. They're eating, they're talking. I went over to one table, I said, what's going on here? And they says, well, we're playing cards. Oh, not for money, Ms. Carter, we're just, but.
Probably wanna Kevin.
But, but they're playing, I mean, we've got rook games going on. I mean, you still have to talk, and I know that seems so out of sorts or just not anything to be excited about, but, yep, we're not, you know, they're talking, communicating, it is noisier in the halls, the cafeteria is outrageous, it's just, but it's good noise. And so we're hoping we see that, you know, we see that has an impact on that. I go back to the relationship thing, and we've talked about all of our schools, but again, I am the old dog. I can't help but notice how the relationship and the support and the communication has shifted in this time with the board members, with, with all of us. We have a principal text, group text thing, and, you know, maybe about mood pods, it may be about, you know, it may be about, you know, what about this kid, can I get the bass fishing team? Sure, you know, we are communicating, and I just think we've realized it is a team effort. You all are building what we're gonna get. And so it just makes sense that we all work together. And that's happened. And that, that's for me, it's been around a long time. But it is, it is like a church experience, it's like an amen. And everybody here, I think, is here for the kids and here to teach them and do, and it's just, it's just good. Amen.
You know, it just, it touches so many different things. Like the other day, I was in your office, and you all were getting ready to have a meeting with Ms. Diggs and Ms. Bridget and talk about some scheduling, special ed, and things like that. So Ms. Bridget, if you don't care to talk about just the level of support that you all support, I know Ms. Vicki's not here with us, she's got some sickness in the family, but let's be honest, a lot of what your work is compliance on special ed paperwork part, but the instructional part too of what you all do. So if you don't care, Ms. Diggs, you chime in too. But Ms. Bridget, just kind of tell us about, on that coach side of the special ed part, what does that look like for you all?
So with the compliance, he's right, that's what we deal with a lot, with a lot of new teachers coming into our buildings.
She's all about dotting those i's and crossing those t's.
Lots of new students in all the buildings again this time, you know, it's like we're starting from scratch, so you know, answering lots of questions. I've already had texts this morning sitting here, so I get a lot of questions, but the teachers do feel safe to contact me and I to ask those questions and to guide and direct them. And we hope with us being able to do a lot of direct, you know, compliance things for them, that it lets them focus a little bit, we're on the instructional side, and they're not having to deal with just paperwork's gotta be done, gotta be done, they can focus on working with those students as well, those strategies. I had, and I had talked with Ms. Stringer, we had talked about, you know, looking at some of the novice in special ed and maybe doing some, maybe claiming with some of our teachers with those students. So that's the big thing with me, is I'd like to, you know, cut that novice reduction, which is at our lowest levels. So getting those over, and there's lots of students that are at a high novice level that we could jump over to a friend's, and that would really change how our test works when they end. But I try to, and then like with the high school, I've been meeting with them once a week, especially, we deal with compliance things, but we're also talking about instructional things. And it's even from going from, what can you do in your classes with your number of kids that you have and the disabilities that you have in there, and what are some different strategies? And I even referred, I think, to Paul Baloo the other day about the Bruce teaching, about, you know, how you can take articles and put it on different levels for students, you know, especially in middle school, high school, you know, they're all, not everyone's reading at those levels. So when they're reading at a lower level, we need to take the same material and give it out to their levels. So that's the kind of things that I'm trying to do. I like to get more into the instructional part, but, you know, the compliance, it's something that I need priority, but I hope that takes some of that off of those students, of those teachers, and so they can really work with their students and they work with group, and so they have an instructional, and so that's good.
It's all tied together, every piece of it is tied together.
First, I'd just like to thank the board for allowing us to have these two consultants. She does elementary, and Bridget, and she does high school and middle school. And I will tell you, at first they're like, what are we gonna be doing? And I said, it's gonna find you.
I don't think you have to ask that now, Bridget, you don't have to ask that.
My intentions are always good, but Mr. Ford can attest to this, where we get through one thing with paperwork, we get something else down through special education, an audit or something. So I'm really glad they're out there more than I do to support, you know, and they're an arm of the district board, and I think they represent it well. But the special education, I'm just glad, paperwork is burdensome as it can be, it guides the teaching and the planning, I don't know what you put down, I can just put down something and not use it. And so I think that if they'll get out there and say, this is, you know, you really have to do something, it's authentic, that you can work, I think it's been really helpful to the teachers.
She and I are trying to make it intentional with these goals that they set for these students, and they're intentional, and things that they're doing in the classrooms that they use, you know, instead of just making a goal, let's go with the flow, be very intentional and looking at the data, I think that they can do this.
The teachers are expecting them, and they really call on them, and like if they're not there for PLC or something, they've got their questions lined up. So I think it's been really good support for the teachers, both of them out there. And Mr. Smith said, I appreciate him saying that about Ms. Vicki, and she would, I would love for her to never hear that, because they do. And with the teachers that are coming in, we have so many, we just figure out, we just need to train them the way they go. It's, it's better than, and not that, this is not knocking down the teachers that are more veteran teachers or more seasoned, but some of these teachers don't know what they're supposed to do or exactly what compliance looks like, and if they learn that from the beginning, that's all they know, and we've found that, well, that's working.
Most of them will tell you, in the last, they don't learn, they don't learn what they need to do with these IEDs and things until they get the hearing started. So they really do need the guidance, and I hope that, you know, we can answer all their questions and more, but I know I get thanked on a daily basis.
More often than not, our special ed staff, our new special ed staff, are one of the greatest concentration of teachers that are not traditionally prepared. They're option six, and they have a degree in something else, then they get special education. That's, that's probably more so than any area is, is that. But going back to what you just said, Ms. Amy, that's biblical, train them up in the way, right?
Yes. And these that we work with, they don't have to have Mr. Ford's class, that's reason.
There you go. Thank you all. Mrs. Stringer, we're thankful to have you at the Hailman Middle School this year, is your first year as the head principal?
Well, it is my first year, I have an excellent mentor the last five years as an assistant for the year. Mr. Assam was wonderful to work with, and I contribute with success in here for sure. Just briefly, an Alpa test course, these are broken down into different colors just to represent our teams here at middle school. That is one of the last, this is our third year with teams, and I'll explain a little bit about that here in just a minute. But as far as scores, overall, we are yellow. We were green the year prior, and I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if everybody in the room knows that you have to continue growing each year. So for that change, we had a three-point-four change on my prior year's scores, and we needed half of that to remain green, so we needed a one-point-seven. We only had a point-six. So we felt just, you know, shy of the green. As we looked at our data in math, we were, math was our only accountability, we were green, there was a red, we could go seven, and I quite agree with her. There was a huge reduction of gap with our students with disability in math. And so you can see the gap went from fifty-six point eight to thirty-five point five, which is, which is a big, big deal, closing that gap. And because of that, we are no longer at TSI school. So that's probably our biggest celebration.
So talk to the target and just mention so they're clear about what that meant for the TSI.
Yes, a targeted support, uh, school in particular, um.
It's a federal classification.
It's a federal classification, and targeted support means only one area. And, um, that particular area was our students with disabilities. So our, um, students with disabilities in mathematics, more than doubled, um, from, in their score from the year prior. So that is a huge, huge celebration, so we're, we're thankful for that. So no longer TSI was, our, our teachers shouted to the rooftops, and, and that was just, that was a big, big celebration, a big plus. Um, in reading, um, overall, we would have been considered yellow. Um, our si- our six and seven reading scores were actually green, and really high green, really close to blue. Uh, we did have a, a big drop in eighth grade reading, so that's one of our concerns this year, but, um, our eighth grade reading teachers are devastated with those scores. If you look at math as we went throughout the year, it was fantastic. And, and so, we're not sure what happened on that last math to KSA, but we are investigating that. I'll go up here in just a minute. Um, I'm gonna skip down to writing there, the yellow, um, because those are their same teachers, those are our eighth grade teachers. Our writing scores were phenomenal, and if we were only, uh, if our accountability was only writing, we would have been blue. And we had a nine point two decrease in writing. So, that was a celebration for those eighth grade teachers. Um, so they feel that maybe, um, toward the end of the year, there was a little more focus on the writing, and a little less on the reading. Um, so they already put in some, um, strategies to, to accommodate for that for this year. Um, science and social studies, um, science, well, we'll start with social studies, it's at the top. Social studies, um, was yellow, um, our social studies teachers were not real happy with that. Um, they worked so hard, and, um, how social studies tested has changed quite a bit. Um, so we are working this year on, um, getting some support for them. They're actually going to visit, um, another school. Not that that's the answer, but they just wanna get some ideas.
But they came to you, didn't they?
Uh-huh, that's their idea. They actually came to me and, and said, can we do this? You know, we have a friend in this particular school, and we would just like to see what, what they're doing. And I said, absolutely, that, that's wonderful, not that we, and they understand, they said, we know that that might not be our answer, uh, but at least it would give us some ideas of some instructional strategies, uh, how they're answering, uh, particular, uh, on-demand, not on-demand, uh, instructional response questions, extended supplies. And I'm, I'm like, yes, that, that's wonderful. Of course, we have Dr. Bartra in, in social studies as we are roots. She's phenomenal, and she's on board with them visiting as well. And she's gonna visit the school at a later time, just so that she can get a glimpse of what they are seeing. Um, we had a small decrease in science. Uh, science actually was yellow, but with a decrease that would change, sometimes will alter those colors, and so that did make science be orange. Um, if you look at science individually, with surrounding counties, um, they were actually, their status score before the, the change, and before the change, they were actually, um, higher than some of the green schools in science. And with that being, that, that change, that would be a school, a school that maybe had scored not so great, but they had such a large change, it knocked them up to the green. So that, you know, they were devastated when we first looked at the, the data. And then we're back to looking at, you know, surrounding schools, um, you know, they, they feel a little better, but still not satisfied. And that's wonderful, I can't, my teachers are awesome, they're concerned about, uh, the school, the te- they're concerned about these students, and not just their, um, performance on the KSA, but just general in general. They really believe that their job is to get them ready for Ms. Carter, and, and for the next level, and I love that. Um, so when we were doing data analysis, I mean, it was busy, it was extremely busy. Um, I'm gonna drop down to the red at the bottom, the survey, um, we were green on the survey. Um, I'm gonna point out these three things, because this just really speaks out about our teachers and how they care for our kids. Um, so some of their highest, uh, scores on the survey, about the students, to it, my teachers expect me to do my best. Um, at least one adult listens, and my school is a caring place. And that just, to me, shouts volumes about, um, our teachers, uh, here in this school. Um, I've got some other things that I wanna talk about a little bit, but I'm gonna, Dr. Bartra, uh, talk a little bit about our plans for improvement. We are gonna focus on eighth grade EBLA, sixth grade math, and, uh, science and social studies. And then I'm gonna hand over, let her explain some of those processes that we're gonna follow to, to focus on those.
So this is the, um, the third year of teams, so, uh, I'm sure you all are aware, but just the middle school operates in teams. So, sixth grade has two teams, seventh two, and eighth grade two, and each one of those teams has a content teacher. So that, in the middle school, you really have a family feel. Um, it, it is different, I taught there before there were teams, so I can attest to before and after. You, you just have that family. It's almost like you get a little glimpse of elementary brought in to keep those kids in middle, because they're not high schoolers yet, they're not elementary students. They're, they're right there in the middle on a lot of things in life, and just trying to figure stuff out. But they have that team, uh, which also allows the, the teachers to really get to know those kids, because they only have half of the grade level, they have a planning together, and so that's part of what they do, uh, on the floor with the PLCs. Ms. Stringer meets with them, and I'm at those PLCs too, uh, every other week, where she goes over all sorts of different, uh, things with them. It's very data-driven, they have very specific times where they tell her, I love this one with her PLC, she's got it up on the board, and, uh, they can see that she's typing the notes in, listening to them, getting the information. They share, these are student issues that I have, these are concerns that I have. They're typed in there, they're addressed, and then when they come back next week, they're talk- she talks to them about how she's addressed those concerns. Um, and that's just, that's huge for teachers, you, you need to know that you have that support. When they're not meeting in the conference room, um, they're still meeting. And this is where they're either meeting in teams, and they have the team meeting in the conference room. Uh, those other weeks, they're, she has, it, it, it looks crazy if you were to look at the calendar, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie. The first time I saw it, I went, oh, okay, I got this. In fact, this, um, this year, I needed me to tell her something about PLCs, and I was like, well, I texted her, it's gonna take me a minute to get that typed out, and, uh, because it is different, but once you start doing it, I mean, we, we've got it. So it's amazing the logistics that's put in and the deliberation for this type of coverage. But she has classes covered by their, your ESS people, uh, Ms. Poppy and Ms. Luxler are there. And they will go in to make sure that the two seventh grade math teachers for each team, they don't have planning together. But, once every other week, they have a full hour together to plan because of this intricate, intricate schedule that allows for this coverage. And so, they get that content, and they get that team planning, and it's just so important that they're being able to plan in those multiple different ways, on top of some afters. Been a little bit more after-school meetings this year, at, actually at both schools, simply because our Kagan, the day we were supposed to do Kagan, I heard it made it, and we had to reschedule.
The trainer couldn't get up here.
Yes, the trainer, the trainer, even though we got momentum, the trainer really could not get up here. And we, we didn't really want anybody else either, you know, we, secondary, you just, and we're middle school and high school, we like this person, we want this person.
She established her credibility.
She has established her credibility, she was a high school math teacher, the teachers feel like she's part of them, and they want her. In fact, she comes back and does coaching, we are very set on that. But, um, but in saying that, we had the Kagan Day on what was, when the elementary schools were doing their day-to-day, and they were going over this. So that allowed both of the schools, they do a two-hour average school, three talks, and would have those types of meetings. So, they've been very deliberate in those, um, going into, you know, the first one that Ms. Stringer had, and admin goes with each group, so they've got an admin person that's in there, which includes myself and Ms. Stapp, I mean, that she utilizes everybody. And they have a math tracker, um, which will tell them where the students are, it tells them novice, apprentice, proficient, distinguished. But in front of that, they have how those kids scored in KSA at the end of the year before. So it's by their team, so say you are a seventh grade student, and that seventh grade teacher's looking at that data, they have how you scored your sixth grade year. Then they're gonna have your fall math as a seventh grader, your winter math as a seventh grader, your spring math as a, as a seventh grader, and then your KSA as a seventh grader. So you have a full picture of how they came when they first came to you, and how they are at the very end. Uh, and so the teachers were going through there, and one of the things that she had them do was look for red flags. So Ms. Stringer had them pick out red flags. This kid was proficient last year, they were proficient in math in the fall, but then they started going out. Or they were proficient all the way around, and then on KSA, all of a sudden, they were apprentice or novice, or vice versa. Some were, some were, good the other way. And those teachers, they had, um, questions and time to reflect on, what is it that they think happened throughout that school year that would've made that difference one way or the other? Um, so allowing those after-school hours to do that, I think is going to be critical for these teachers, because I think if you walk through the hall, if you were to ask a teacher data about a student, they're gonna know. Um, Ms. Stringer's very data-driven, um, in fact, they probably went when they see both of us coming, because we're both so much of data people, but it is, it is very data-driven. Um, she, she's doing the walkthroughs, uh, the teachers know that those are coming, the whole admin team is doing walkthroughs. Um, they're checking for HQIR, and they're checking for domains two and three, which is how they're, part of how they're evaluated. Um, domain two is on the classroom environment, how is that management going, what's planned, is it safe? And then the classroom instruction, um, and keep a track of who all's been in there, what that data's showing them. And then the flip side is HQIR, is that being used, is it being used with ability? Um, questions about the students' engagement with the HQIR questions, does it include higher-order thinking? Um, those are all in there, and then, they celebrate. They probably celebrate like in elementary school. I mean, I, I, they, they really do, they have, uh, the, the nine-week celebration, which is going on yesterday. It's today, the nine-week celebration. And then, uh, every other week, each team will celebrate their immediate effort. So they're gonna get to celebrate, the students will, if they had put in the effort and completed the things that they were supposed to complete those two weeks. So they don't always have to wait for the nine weeks, they're getting a little bit, not quite as immediate as in elementary, but you're gradually working them in to those incentives and, um, those rewards. And then, uh, frequent faculty celebrations, um, I think Ms. McCall said the two massage chairs that are in there, but, you know, we really don't have time to go sit in a massage chair. But, they have, they have slushies, they do popcorn every Friday. Ms. Selwe, um, the youth service center, she makes that for the teachers every Friday, ready to go, popcorn and drink. Um, they do lots of silly things. Today has been, it, it's hilarious, if, I don't know if you have time, I know this has probably gone longer than you all have planned, but, um, over, do you care if I say it?
Yeah, okay.
Over, over at the middle school, it is, it's hilarious, they're, they've had celebrated Red Ribbon Week this week. And so you have, you have all those, those different things that are going on. And Ms. Stapp sent an email out that they were gonna do a secret teacher celebration, kids didn't know about it. And so the teachers showed up today, and it was anything but a coffee cup or whatever they, so they have their drink, they're not allowed to bring these. They can't bring regular cups, they've all brought something different. Like, um, I think Ms. Wade has an IV bag, Ms. McGowan has a Pringles can, Ms. Stapp's drinking out of a teapot. And the kids didn't know this was happening, and so they come and they see those things. Just, and it seems so silly, but those are things that keep the school alive.
Yeah.
Um, and both, um, middle and high, because it didn't, you mentioned there, I just really wanna make sure, Ms. Sarah Stapp and Ms. Stephanie McGowan do an amazing job on social media, they're showing the community what's going on, and hyping these kids and involving.
If everybody's social media account was ran the way Mrs. Stapp and Mrs. McGowan, positive, negative, the world would be different.
It's great, the TikTok videos you'll see, that, that come, I mean, it's just, it's, and it's, it's timely. It's not like you're seeing stuff that's happened late, it's timely, and it's great. If you don't follow them, if you have social media, get on Facebook and follow the middle and high school, because they're, they're great, they really are.
Ms. Carter's a star, right?
Yes, yes. They're all told, they're all told, that's all. Um, they're, they've also been looking at release items, that's one thing that's going around into, uh, those times where they're meeting, um, social studies just did that with the KSA, and then, um, Ms. Stringer and I talked, and, you know, social studies had come to her, like she said, with concerns, so we're looking at their HQIR. KDE does not vet social studies books. They vet math, science, and reading, they do not vet social studies. They do give us a rubric, however, and so, we took, um, that rubric in this week with them in one of their after-school days, and the social studies group sat around, and we started going through the rubric to vet their social studies book, to make sure it is what's needed, and to find the gaps. Where are the gaps, what is our book not providing us with, that the state says that we need to have to make it an HQIR? Um, so they're in that process, they were so excited, they were, they were doing it, you know, one of the teachers was like, can you put this on Google, so we can all start typing in it? I mean, the, the, the teachers, they just, they want to get better, they want to improve. And it's just amazing how you watch throughout the district, at all the schools, so it's really impressive.
Okay, all right. Um, back to the, what, the drinks that they're drinking, or the cups, or not cups, anything but a cup. Or Mr. Miller, he's drinking out of a row weight. So, so that's really cute, I have such an amazing team, um, she mentioned Ms. Stapp. I, I love the positivity and the fun and the creativeness that Ms. Stapp brings, because I'm very predictable and, um, boring, my kids would say, when we play games. They always know how mom's gonna answer, uh, but anyway, I, I love the spiciness, uh, uh, that Ms. Stapp and what she brings. Uh, but anyway, all, all of, all of the team. I mean, I can speak on every single member in this school, what they, they bring to, to the table. Um, so different that you have to work well, um, as a team. Um, so she touched on, uh, team leads, and team leads, our six teams, which are sixth grade, the Chris Lees, the Volkings, seventh grade, the Falcons, and the Knott Fox, and grade the Mamas, and the Co-Grays. Um, so there are six teachers in the building that lead that team, and they truly work together as a team. And the students that are within that team, they, they see those four teachers, and then those four teachers, uh, can collaborate and talk about the student's progress, where, um, the dangers that they are seeking. And if they have concerns, then, um, they can refer to our, uh, we have a lot of social emotional writing supports. Um, so we have Ms. Goodson, who has a self-SDL license, um, she's going to be our second counselor this year, thank you. So that's, we have two counselors, uh, school counselors. Um, we have our helping kids, um, uh, mental health counselors, and have one in the building, full-time, and another one, part-time. And then we have other outside entities that come in. They all work together, um, with our team and our team leads, to make sure that the students are getting, um, what they need as far as emotional support, or any type of mental health services if they, they may need. Um, we do have on-demand scrimmages, three times per year, and that's just, that's, that's six, seven, and eight. And so we should make our, in the late term, for, for student, we do provide the release time for those students, for those teachers to grade those student, uh, on-demand. Um, teachers are asking to visit other classrooms and see how others are, uh, they're, you know, using their instructional strategies for Kagan strategies, their, their high-quality instructional resources, and I love it. So if we can provide it, we are providing it. And for them to come and ask, and I know sitting next to so-and-so, and sitting next to so-and-so, absolutely, 100% gonna try to work that out, even if that means that I would have a class, that, that's, that's kind of our one whatsoever, because we've gotten learning from each other, and feeling that comfortable to learn from each other. Um, our teacher mentors for our option six teachers, I feel like we have several in the building this year. Um, that's a wonderful program, so I wanna thank you all for that, uh, because those teacher mentors are going in and, and working with those new teachers, and also those, you know, option six teachers, or a teacher that might just need an extra support, and then vice versa. Those option six slash new teachers are going into their classrooms and, um, and learning and collaborating. I'm very thankful for Dr. Bartra, she's amazing, um, whatever. Whatever I need, big, right there. She gets it. And again, she can, she can bring a little more of the fun into some of the instructional practice where I'm, you know, very data-driven and matter-of-fact to the point. So I appreciate that she has that type of personality. Our daykeepers, they love our students. I can't remember which one mentioned, it might have been, I don't know, Mr. Spill, Mr. Reynolds. I don't remember. If I need to know something about a student and their whereabouts, what's going on in their life, if they moved, whatever, nobody's better than Ms. Liz, Susan, and his back in the office. They know everything about the students. And their smiles when the kids walk in in the morning, they just lights up, you know, to build it. So we have wonderful, wonderful daykeepers that, that do those things. I am thankful for the daytime labor people. We are giving some very meaningful RTI for our students. And so we get to support them where they need extra support. We have a lot of students that have been home down, not home down, homeschool. And we have a really high number this year. They have been, yes, they have been homeschool for two or three years or maybe even longer. And so there's a difference there. So we're using those daytime labor people to, you know, work with these students and close those gaps. The last thing, well, two more things. First of all, thank you, elementary schools, you are preparing kids for us. And I appreciate that. We can see that when they come to us. The last thing, again, you know, we're very data-driven. But we have, I had created a, well, I took, I took Dr. Bartra's math tracking and I've created a, a projected score tracking device. So if we take our students' fall math scores right now and we put, I've got it set up so all we have to do is put in the novice and APD percentages, and it will spit out what we are currently. So currently, right now, we are on target to be a solid green next year. But that's right now. I know that that changes throughout the year. But we'll be able to, you know, after the winter, we'll plug those numbers in again. After the spring, we plug those numbers in again. Again, and so that way we'll get a really good idea about the time that everybody's.
What's so good is when they do plug those numbers in here and they get those checklists of the math data, it's not just information in notebook. You know, from the PLCs and the conversations, instructional changes happen as a result of that data. And that's what drives all of this so crucial with that.
And every student knows, because I know the elementaries are doing it too. You've heard them talk about it. The kids know where they are too. All the way up from when they start math testing to eleventh grade, when they take their last math test, they have goal sheets. They're, I mean, even in high school, they're setting goals. In middle school, they're setting goals. In elementary, they're setting goals. These kids are owning their learning in our district when it comes to the math and the tracking. They really are.
I had a gentleman tell me last week, Mr. Spring, well, I bet he's telling me, I thought teachers had him maybe, he'd have it two-thirty, then off on summer. And I'll come to this, and no way. I don't want to be a teacher.
I know, he told you that. Anybody else have anything else that's popped in your mind? There's other people to talk to or anything?
Mr. Moore, can I say that option six, we have, we talk about option six. They don't come to us, but the people that we've had, I want to say we've been very blessed. They have worked really hard because they don't come in with a background. And they have to work to get the background and the strategies and stuff. But we've been really blessed to start the night department for some of the people that have come in and not, and the people that are already here. And I think as we go through this, our department will be stronger each year because we've had a lot of people come in either to learn, either to work with us. And, you know.
I just think of the part of Ms. Stringer, Mrs. Tarter, with the new staff that they have and Mr. Latrell. You know, he, no, he didn't come to us initially certified as a teacher, but he's ran a, you know, he has a biology degree background. He's ran a lab. And it's great content, which is kind of helping the pedagogy and things like that. Same thing with some of the other teachers. Mrs. Tarter has a new math teacher that, no, not certified to be a teacher to begin with, but has a math degree. And so we can work through those things. And same thing with Mrs. Stringer. We've just got some great hires of some folks. And more importantly than that, they care for the kids too, and they want the larger growth.
I think what I see out of some of my option six people is it's kind of been a beautiful process in just their career in that a couple of them, you know, one of, one of the option six teachers that I hired had been an assistant in our MSD class.
Yes.
Now she's a special educator. So she had some knowledge.
Yep.
More importantly, she had the heart to go further. And now she's doing even more with those students. Actually, two of mine, I think, have had prior experiences in our building a lot. So they already knew the building, they knew the culture. They're doing the extra work to achieve the certification.
Absolutely.
It's really good stuff.
They take special people to the institution.
It does. Well, Mr. Murray, Mr. Selby, Ms. Joy, Ms. Brenda, Mr. Gazook, thank you for your time. I know that's, it's been a long meeting. I look forward to this meeting every year and appreciate you all's time this morning. As you all can see, as the folks that we have in this room, we have got great faculty, staff, and administration. And they're here to do the right things by kids. This is, I told you it was an informal meeting, did I tell you, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, we left our fog machines and our pyrotechnics at school.
These are some things he was planning to bring to the meeting. But, you know, I think Ms. McCall may have tampered him down the other day.
We took out the thing.
Okay.
I can't believe you didn't bring us food.
I've got to go to Mighty Dollar and get some more moon pies.
But everybody in this room, I want to thank you for what you're doing for our students and the support you provide to our students and families and to our staff. Because, you know, we've said this before, what, you know, it is a family atmosphere. Just like our kids, we have employees that go through tough times. I've been through tough times. Each of you all in this room have been through tough times. But I'm proud that I'm in a district where we can go through those together and we can have each, each one of you all. Board members, y'all have anything else to?
I just feel good.
Yes.
I'm still good.
Yeah, it's good.
I'm good.
Well, it's been, it's been a good morning. It's been a very good morning.
Moving on. Well, over to public comments again. Anyone like public comments? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Brenda.
I like Washington D. Jones.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sure.